We'll make a motion when we come out of executive session.
A second.
Chairman Giordina.
Hi.
Mike Nolan.
Hi.
Ron Jenzick.
Hi.
Okay, good evening, everybody. This is the July twenty-six, twenty-three meeting of the Chapel of New Castle's only Board of Appeals. Before we start tonight, I'd like to take a moment and thank Ken Cooper for twenty-one years of service on this board, fifteen years of which he served as our chairman. Ken is a true gentleman. He treated every person that came before this board with dignity and respect. He guided our decisions with insight and wisdom, and he will be missed as a member of our community. We wish him all the best in his future endeavors. Tonight, we only have four members present in a five-member board. We need to have three affirmatives for approval and be aware that a tie vote is a denial. With that, we can start.
Mr. Chair, just to let you know, so I also second, you know, the statements you made about Chairman Cooper or prior Chairman Cooper. It was a pleasure working with him. And last night, the town board did appoint Mr. Giordina as chair of the board, so congratulations to you. And I'm sure it'll be a pleasure working with you as well. We are expecting one board member to appear remotely. Once he's on, we'll make that announcement. I don't believe he's on the, at the meeting yet. So at this point, we only have three board members right now until Mr. Dubs is able to attend. So we can begin, you know, if you want to begin with the extensions, I think that's okay.
This is Robbins, request for a first extension approval. One Allison Lane, Mount Kisco, New York. For four rear yard set, uh, uh, for four yard, rear yard setback variances of the three side yard setback variances. Development coverage now coming into two year. So anyway, a lot of variances. Is Robbins here?
Yeah, I'm on. How are you? And so just confirming everybody could hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay, yeah. Hopefully make this quick. After we appeared in front of the committee and got conditional approval, which I believe was for six months, we, you know, have been following the path to get the permits. Ultimately ran into some issues with respect to the stormwater. And so I had to make a pivot and bring on a new engineer, Alan Pilch, who was recommended to me by several people in the community. He's been wonderful and he successfully completed a test with Terry Rowe supervising it just a few weeks ago and then submitted a set of comprehensive plans shortly thereafter to Terry and Bob. The initial feedbacks were good, but that issue, I think, is what delayed us. You know, I don't know what the typical timeline is to renew the extension. If it's another six months, that'd be great. I suspect the permits will be coming in within the next, you know, based on my understanding, few weeks and we'll be starting this project at some point in September. But it was really more a stormwater issue and we seem to have solved it. So that was the holdup and I think it's hopefully not an issue any longer.
You want six months?
Yeah, I, I think six months is very conservative, but I figured I better not run into this issue again. So that's what we, we thought we would ask for.
I'll make a motion that we grant the six-month extension.
A second.
Chairman Giordina.
Hi.
Mike Nolan.
Hi.
Howard Dubs.
Hi.
Ron Jenzick.
Hi.
Next is Brewer, request for a first extension. Lauren Keith Brewer, twenty-two eighty-three Millwood Road for side yard variance to construction division. When we say simple family variance. Brewer, here.
Yes, hi. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Hi. So we're looking for an extension. We had something come up with our family. We had the contractor ready. We were gonna give them a deposit and then unfortunately, one of my daughters came down with an illness and it's just been a lot of doctor's appointments and it was too much to start the construction with that going on. And also, we didn't think it would be right to have construction workers coming in, you know, for her at that time. So we are moving in a more positive direction now with her health buys, but we've asked for a year so that we could potentially start in next summer at the latest on the project. So I think we're very close with the permit. It was really just something personal that came up why we needed this extension.
Is that a year to start you were asking for?
We would like to start construction hopefully by next summer. I can't remember the exact date of when we were, when, when we needed to finish the construction by. If you could just remind me.
Well, to finish a construction is a year after you start.
Right. Okay, but you needed me to start, I think.
How many months, how many months do you think you need before you can start?
I don't think I can start until next summer.
Which means you want a year?
Yes.
It's usually, it's not our usual way of doing it. We're usually doing six months at a time, but due to the fact that you've got a medical problem and extenuating circumstances, I would like to see you have what you need and therefore I'll make a motion that we grant a one-year extension for this application.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, one year to finish, one year to start, one year to finish.
A second.
Chairman Giordina.
Hi.
Mike Nolan.
Hi.
Howard Dubs.
Hi.
Ron Jenzick.
Hi.
Okay, Biz, you have them?
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Before we go to the next one, just to remind the public, Howard Dubs is appearing remotely. There was notice that he would be appearing remotely and that the public had access to his location. So I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that and the public on Zoom and in the audience was aware. So we do have four, four board members tonight.
Okay, is there somebody here from thirty-nine Red Oak Lane?
Yes.
Can you come up, please? Can you give us your name, please, and the reason you're here in front of us?
Yes, my name is Christina and we live in thirty-nine Red Oak Lane in Mount Kisco and we are the owners of this house and we'd like to build a patio and, oh, a deck, sorry. And so that's why we are here. So first of all, I want just to mention that if you don't understand what I'm talking about, just tell me because we just came from Ukraine and it's just struggling with English, but I'll try my best to explain.
It goes very well.
Thank you. So first of all, I want to say that we have a concern from our neighbors about flooding their basement. That's why we just continue coming here and, and I feel really sorry about this issue. But I guess all Westchester County now is suffering because of all these heavy rains and it's just terrible. And we have the same issue as well, even if our house is brand-new built. But anyway, we have issues in our basement as well. So what else? I wanted to add that our family just want to enjoy our deck and like all other people here in this country. And I think it's just cultural thing. And every, every house I've seen, they all have either deck or patio. So it's, for me, it's not possible to, to not have it. Next, our architect, Adam, tried his best to follow all these, all town codes and rules. And he draw different kind of decks or palos which can be discussed here. So I hope that some of them could work. And so that, that's pretty good. It was what I wanted to say, so that's why we are here. And I'm so sorry in advance if our youngest boy would interrupt you, but anyway, he's not here right now. Just one, okay. So thank you very much for your attention and if you have any questions, I'm open to answer. Thank you.
Should we go ahead and hear from the architect tonight?
Hi, I'm Campania, I'm the architect for thirty-nine Red Oak Lane. I'm here tonight mostly to answer any questions that come up, just provide some continuity from the previous meetings. I just want to back you just for one thing in terms of the agenda states the prior applications as patio.
It might not have been changed.
Yeah, so it just needs, just for clarity, for evidence to be changed to a deck. And there's also no side variance required anymore. It's just the rear variance.
Okay, we can change that.
Okay, thank you. So I'm just gonna hand the floor over to Steve Univer at this point. And again, I'm here to prompt anything that comes.
So here, you're, just, just for the record, you're no longer asking for the side yard variance? Correct.
That's right. The original applications for a patio.
Right.
Right. In order to increase the amount of absorbed ground in our property, we changed it to a deck. And I pulled the deck back towards the house, so it no longer requires a side variance.
So we're just looking for a rear yard.
Yeah.
And it's, and it's a deck, it's not a patio.
It's a deck.
So you're talking about pervy surfaces as opposed to the pervy.
Right.
Okay.
And it's still seventeen feet for the rear yard?
Yeah, yeah, that's the same. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak to this application?
If we could just, if just one person could speak first.
I'm sorry, okay.
Thank you.
Yes, I apologize and a good evening and thank you for allowing me to zoom into the hearing today. My name is Stephen Univer. I'm the attorney for the owner of thirty-nine Red Oak Lane. And I just wanted to address a couple of points that were brought up by the Jason Properties attorney that appeared last hearing. I just wanted to say, one, that the, the plan by the architect have continuously changed in order to adapt to the ecological environment there to make sure that there's no water damage that goes to the neighboring property. But also, once the neighboring owner's attorney contacted my clients, we had open frank communication. Nothing was provided us to show that there was water damage that was caused by my client's property or building of any deck or patio. There were just pictures shown to us of water damage in the basement. We immediately said, what would you like us to address? And the neighboring attorney showed us pictures of what it used to look like. There was some shrubbery. We offered immediately to put up shrubbery. And a few weeks later, that offer was rejected and we were requested to install a French drain and a dry well in our property, which has never existed before. I wanted to state that the building itself has not changed in the character at all since prior to the, my clients moving in. However, flooding and rain has occurred in the area in Westchester and Upstate New York.
This meeting is being recorded.
In Westchester and Upstate New York, there were flooding emergencies. So my client's position that any water damage is a result of global warming or anything. Some feedback, I apologize. My client is willing to continue this open communication with the neighbors. However, requesting to install wells and and French drains and anything else that had never existed on the property before seems as though the, the clients or the adjacent owners are just trying to change the landscape on our dime. Unfortunately, my suggestion was that the neighboring adjacent owners could file any kind of insurance claims they had. And if it was as a result of anything my clients did, that would be a civil matter that the zoning board really doesn't have any jurisdiction over, but it would be a zone, uh, issue for the civil matter that their insurance company would subjugate against us. So they would be made whole. The idea that a zoning board or preventing my clients from building a deck just seems unjust and unfair, especially since everything was already approved, I believe, by the town engineer and as well when the building was erected. And that is all I have to say on my client's behalf at this time. But if any questions come up afterwards, I'm here as well.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else from the audience like to address this matter? Come on up.
Hi, my name is Su Chin Chang and I'm the owner of the twenty-seven Pineview Road, which is a picture of the thirty-nine Red Oak Lane. And I want to ask the chairman and the board to grant my daughter to a Zoom meeting. She, she will want to speak through the Zoom meeting.
She's on Zoom, on Zoom?
Yeah, Angela Liu. She raised her hand.
Yeah, yeah. Happy to hear from her.
Okay.
Hi, can you all hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
All right. I guess I don't think my, my image is showing up, but I can just go ahead and give some updates and some of our other concerns via voice. My name is Angela Liu and I'm a resident of twenty-seven Pineview Road. I want to thank you guys for your time this evening. I want to update you guys about, you know, there are some pretty specific questions that the board was asking at the last May hearing meeting that we have been working on finding answers and kind of concrete solutions towards. And so some of those specific questions that were mentioned at the last meeting, the board asked, you know, for concrete solutions to improve water runoff. We're also asking about, you know, if landscaping additions would be sufficient to prevent flooding in our property. And so we have asked our civil engineer to look at the thirty-nine Red Oak Lane plans. We've also asked them to calculate the amount of water runoff coming onto our property and to provide some recommendations for improving water runoff since that sounded like something that the board was very interested in hearing about at the last meeting. And so to get, to start off, to give you some gross numbers, currently, there's around three thousand gallons or four hundred and one cubic feet of water runoff that's coming onto our property from thirty-nine Red Oak Lane. This is an increase in more than a thousand gallons compared to Breyer. And this is also just a low estimate because it doesn't take into account the amount of water runoff that was previously absorbed by those hedges, trees, bushes that were removed. The, the neighbors have mentioned that they've discussed if landscaping additions would be a potential solution. They've offered to replant those bushes and trees. And that's something that was brought up at the last meeting as well. And so we brought this up with our civil engineer and they told us that simply planting new bushes and trees will not solve the water issue as the construction and removal of landscaping has already altered the compactness of the soil on the property. And the new landscaping would not have that same kind of extensive root structure that was present prior to removal and therefore would not be able to absorb water as effectively as the previous landscaping. Along those lines, we also discussed the proposed deck plans with an architect. And she told us that, you know, this proposed wood deck will still prevent grass from growing underneath the area and that would lead to even less absorption of water runoff, increased soil erosion and ultimately the exacerbation of the existing flooding issue to our property. And so that's why, you know, we had tried to come up with some concrete solutions as we were asked at the last meeting. And that's why we talked to our civil engineer and proposed options of constructing either a French drain or a dry well with piping to direct water runoff to a public storm drain. I'd like to also mention that our civil engineer additionally brought up a pollution concern after looking at the thirty-nine Red Oak Lane plans regarding the location of their septic tank, its leach field and the pipe that we had seen previously conveying water into our property from thirty-nine Red Oak Lane. And at this time, I'd like to have my mom show you some pictures to help illustrate those things.
This is the previous, the last year, July ten.
And so I can just go through and kind of describe what you're looking at.
The same place, if you look at the, the tree, in the same place. This is the picture for the plant, the, that's the leach field for the septic tank.
And so just to recap, we had brought up this, this pipe at our, I think, believe the last meeting. This was a pipe that we had seen back in July of twenty-two. It's a little hard to see in the picture, but it's that green pipe in the area of stones. And it was directly conveying water towards our property. We brought this up with, with the, the town and the builder at that time. And then around August of twenty-twenty-two, we saw that, you know, the pipe was not there anymore, but we still had significant, or rather, there was no visual evidence of the pipe being above ground at that point. But we still continue to have that water pooling in the same area specifically. So I think it's safe to assume that the pipe is probably still there. It's unclear what they did with it. And so as you can see in the building plans, if you compare that with where the pipe is on their property, that pipe is directly over the leach field of the septic tank, which is circled in red on those plans. And so our concern is that that pipe is still there and it's directing, you know, unplanned additional water over the leach field and saturating ground there. And just to give the board a little bit of background, a leach field is where like the liquid waste of the septic tank goes. And then that liquid waste sort of trickles out of the holes from the pipes and gets absorbed into the soil. I think you can appreciate that if there's new water kind of running through that soil where the septic effluent is coming out of, there's potential for mixing of that water, which would lead to that mixture carrying into the runoff to our property and potentially into, you know, public storm drains as a legal discharge. And so that's an additional concern that we have coming onto our property. Finally, I would like to reiterate the issues that this deck will pose in terms of privacy and noise. This is something that our neighbor in forty-one Red Oak Lane had also brought up during the last hearing. And you know, I'd like to say that with each new construction, thirty-nine Red Oak Lane building structures have been getting closer and closer to our property as well as looking over our property. So the initial construction decreased that rear yard setback by one point five feet. And I believe actually, just to, just to clarify, the, the current variance stated on the application as I saw it was nineteen feet. And so the current application wants to decrease the setback by nineteen feet, which is essentially having the setback from our property border. Now, my understanding of the purpose of having an established setback is to, you know, ensure adequate privacy. And the variance requested from this deck would be violating that principle. It would bring the neighboring property structures even closer to our bedroom, our bathroom, our kitchen and our living room. And, you know, if they have galleries or such on their deck, the sound would carry very easily to our property, given the close proximity. And this is a really, this is a pretty big deal for us because we all work from home, as you know, is common during the COVID era now. And we spend a lot of times, a lot of time in those rooms. We, we haven't been able to, you know, open our bedroom and bathroom curtains since the neighbors have moved in. And so those are our, our main concerns and you're the, the actions that we have been taking to try to answer the board's questions and to be able to help move this process forward. I do want to just emphasize the, the significant impact that this flooding issue has had on our family and our property. You know, rain never used to be a concern for us in the past, but now whenever we see rain in the forecast, we're, we're just afraid. We're afraid that, you know, this might be the time where we might miss an electric plug that could get submerged in water and we're afraid that if we're away from the house and it starts raining, we know that we have to rush back home to start packing things away and preparing for the flooding. And we're afraid that, you know, that this could get even worse and that with further construction, things will get worse. We've been, there have been many nights when we have to be up past, you know, one AM, two AM. We're just constantly scooping water into buckets to try to alleviate the flooding. And it, it just wears on you, wears on you for, for sure. This has just been our new reality since these changes to the thirty-nine Red Oak Lane property. And so I just want to impress that on the board. I really appreciate your guys' time and I think my mom also has a few things to add as well.
Yeah. So I do write up about the same, what's this last meeting? My basement has flooded four times from July first to July sixteen. Four times. I have, I have used multiple vents and dehumidifier for ten days. And the basement is still wet today as I come here. I asked my neighbor on the Red Oak Lane, on the Pineview Road, who is on the lower slope and who is even lower than mine. I want to show you the map that I draw. This is the thirty-nine and I'm here. Yeah, I'm here. Yeah, I am a height. I'm a low, but this is even lower. But I did. I did ask my neighbor, who is lower than me. They do not have any flooding issue. So that means the only house had the flooding issue is my property on the Pineview Road. And which is, I think is tied to the construction of thirty-nine Red Oak Lane. I have no flooding issue before. And now, even only July, I have four times. So every time it is raining, I keep waking up in the midnight. Every two hours, I will check. As the board know, I tried very hard the past two months, try to find, try to provide the board what is the solution and what is we can do, what we can do to prevent my property flooding. All we are asking is for some partnership and share the responsibility for this community that I have been here for twenty years. I have had learned how to take on the many responsibilities after my husband passed away. It is difficult as a single man. But this is our home and important asset for me and my daughters who grow up here. I want to protect it and keep it safe for my family. I really hope the chairman and the board member will help me to keep my property safe. But really thank you for your time today.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to the decision?
If I may make one response to the chairman.
Sure, go ahead.
And I believe my client said it and they definitely do feel for the neighbors and they want to make sure that there is a harmonious environment between all the neighbors in the area. They want to, they're planting roots here. They moved from their country in order to live here peacefully. The issue, I, and I just want to bring it back to the only issue that really is before the board today is the zoning variance. All other issues and the neighbor, adjacent property owners, they're requesting the board act as judges in the Supreme Court or the county court who actually can rule on these civil matters. Our clients have been in open communication. I've spoke with the adjacent owners' attorneys multiple times and we want to continue working with them. However, the zoning issue is only for the variance on building a deck on land that they still can use. So the privacy issues shouldn't really be concerned because the, they're, they're able to use that property at any time. There is a fence there covering the property, the views. The privacy issue shouldn't really be a question here as the privacy will not be altered. The fact is that my client have windows is really the only issue with the privacy, but that was also approved and the building was built over a year ago. This property has been there for over a year and yet the flooding only occurred this year. That's where these issues come from. This really needs to go through a court of law where in where insurance companies can safeguard all property owners. That's really where subrogation comes in on and where lawyers, lawyers should not be at the zoning board. This is purely a zoning issue to provide a variance so my client can build a deck that has gaps in it where the rain will go through. They move from a patio to a deck for these specific reasons. They continuously change their, uh, their plans in order for this. Um, and that's really all I wanted to rest on today.
Um, can I say something in response to that?
Okay.
Um, and so I just want to clarify that this flooding issue has been going on for more than this, just this year. It's been going on since construction started at the property. And then I will also just, I just want to say that, you know, the reason that this plan is here before the zoning board is that it violates the setback regulations for their property. And so, you know, the setback regulations are there and that's why they need a variance to be granted by the board. Um, my understanding of the variance approval process is that, you know, the board considers if there would be an adverse effect on the physical environment and if there would be a detriment to neighboring properties. And so I'd like to ask the board members to consider the information that we presented and think about, you know, if you can say with a hundred percent confident, the confidence that this new construction will not impact us, the neighboring property on both environmental and privacy fronts and will not perpetuate the existing problems. I think that we've seen based on like the previous track records of changes to the property that there has been significant, significant impact.
Thank you. Okay, um.
Is there anybody else? Is there anybody else?
Any, any, uh, comment or pro or con in this application? Okay. Before I hear comments from the rest of the board, uh, I'm gonna just put it to the record that we are fully aware of the problems on this property. We understand what's going on. But we also are limited in our power. Uh, we had our town engineer research this and give us advice on it. There's not enough disturbance in that, in this whole construction of this property next door to you uh, that required any kind of, uh, uh, wetlands mitigation or drainage, uh, infrastructure. Uh, it's well within the boundaries. I'm not reading any of that. Uh, it's been our, uh, um, impression through what we've heard that there is, this flooding is not brand new. It's happened since this new construction was, uh, put up. Um, and again, this was, this is not anything that we have any control over. Uh, we are, we are here looking only at a deck. Whether the deck is constructed, whether the deck is not constructed, is not going to appreciably change the water conditions on this property. Therefore, um, I'd like to have some comments from our other board members if they have any.
Do you want to close the public hearing, Mr. Chair, at this point, or how do you want to say?
Should we do it now?
Yeah, typically if there's nobody else, if there's no further public comments, you do not take your.
Before, before.
You have no further comments of the applicant, then you can make a motion to close.
Before we hear from our, uh, board members, I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Chairman Giordina.
Hi.
Mike Nolan.
Hi.
Howard Dubs. You're on mute.
You're muted, Howard.
Sorry. Hi, hi.
Ron Jenzen.
Hi.
Okay. Sorry about that. Um, are there any comments from the board members that they would like to put into the record?
Uh, I would say that I agree with our chairman and that our purview in this situation is limited um, to what chairman has stated and as much as we, um, you know, our job as zoning board members is to, uh, protect the community. Uh, we only have so much, um, authority to do this. So.
No comment. Howard?
I, I agree. Um, our powers are limited and, um, uh, whether or not the deck is built, uh, the applicant's going to use the backyard and there are privacy issues no matter what. Um, and that's not going to change. That's the, the, the physical, uh, environment of, of the property and the, and the surrounding properties. Uh, so, uh, again, uh, I agree, our, our purview of this is limited. And it's, you know, it's a balancing act. Um, uh.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion on this application. Make a motion that the, uh, variance requested for, uh, seventeen foot rear yard variance.
The mic down. It's true. Yeah, there's, yeah. There you go.
I'll make a motion that the, uh, application for seventeen foot rear yard variance for the construction of a deck, be approved for the following reasons. Preface my, my reasons with the fact that the, uh, buddy neighbor has had many water problems uh, when this house has been built. Uh, we have addressed all we can about, um, mitigation, which we really have no power over. We researched, uh, our, our town engineer to try to find out if he had any way to help alleviate this and doesn't. If the construction of this deck will not reduce or increase the amount of flooding on the property. Granting of this variance will not create undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. Uh, this is an old development that's been improved through the years. Many of the homes that were originally built here have been, uh, increased in size and renovated and modernized uh, with the, with the modern characteristics that we are used to today. There's been no other way to achieve this, um, benefit of the granting of the variance. This is not a substantial variance, uh, in actuality, and numerically it may be, but in actuality it is not. Uh, it's only the installation of a deck. A matter of fact, uh, the original application required a side yard variance and the applicant has, uh, has changed his, uh, construction ideas and had it, had it redone, re, uh, refigured so that there is only one variance required now instead of two. There will be no adverse effect to the physical environment conditions of the neighborhood. As I stated before, there may be some flooding in the area. It is not due to the deck. There is no deck there now and it doesn't flood. And then again, it continues to flood somewhere here. Construction of this deck in the opinion of the board will not increase or decrease the current, the current water problems on the neighborhood. And that is something that has been taken up through engineering and probably, uh, through, through their architects. This is a self-created hardship in that it's legally non-conforming properties, uh, and the applicant knew or should have known that any change to it would create, uh, the need for a variance. That being said, the granting of this variance for the construction of a deck, uh, will not create any undue hardship to the town. Uh, but will, will provide substantial benefit to the applicant. Are you, you're gonna, this is gonna be on peers. How do you have those decked? On, uh, solid, solid two peers?
Yep.
Okay, so what we're going to need is a survey, uh, locating the, the deck peers before construction.
Yep, I'm sorry, a survey locating them?
Yeah, we, we, we need to have some measurement where those peers are gonna be.
It's in the plans.
Do you, you want an actual survey now or your?
I will need a final survey, sir.
Okay, we'll skip the, we won't let make, we'll need a, a final ASBIL survey.
I, I think.
Showing the location of the, uh, tank and its peers.
So, the one survey thing that we were gonna do was just to make sure that we keep the five foot setback to the leach field. We were gonna expose the closest.
You are required to do a final survey at the end to confirm that you've met the setback from the property line.
Yeah, I'm not disregarding them. I'm just saying, when we locate the peers, we're gonna make sure that none of those peers are currently five feet about.
We, we won't push the peer thing. What we're gonna push is that your actual construction, your actual deck has to meet our variance dimensions. And we'll need a final, a final survey showing that that is the actual fact.
Of course.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
And you'll have six months to start and one year to finish.
Yes, I do.
Can I get a second on that?
My second motion.
Chairman Giordina.
Hi.
Mike Nolan.
Hi.
Howard Dubs.
Hi.
Ron Jenzen.
Hi.
You have your variance. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you, Mark.
Um, Hennessy?
If she wants to leave those, they, they should be in the record here. She could give them to the, you can give them to the secretary.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Tim Letter. I'm the architect for this project. I would also like to reiterate your comments about Mr. Cooper. I remember when he was the new guy, twenty-one years ago, because I was here nineteen years before him. Forty years practicing architecture in this town, after the first twenty-one years growing up in Newcastle, where my mom still has her house on Birch Drive. I'm well-versed in this town and the architecture and its codes. Maybe with the exception of the tree code, I am very well-versed and I know how to make a presentation too. Not my building inspector over there. So, a lot's happened since the, uh, last meeting. So, I don't even know where to start, but I'm gonna start by sharing my screen here. Jackie, should you let me do that?
Yes.
Thank you. So you all saw that I, um, I made a resubmission, uh, picking up a couple of oversights on the building permit application to start off with. Um, yeah, the, the town does have a tree ordinance and my understanding there was something about eight inch diameter trees. As an architect, that's what I knew. So, when I was asked to look into a little deeper, had a couple of conversations with Dennis Corelli and I was informed about a landscape buffer area, a new term for this forty-year experienced architect. Um, so, um, after talking with Dennis about the situation on this particular property, um, we, you know, I, I got educated and I made my resubmission based on his comments. So, first of all, the tree, uh, that the neighbor had bought up is a Japanese maple tree, which is non-native, as informed by Dennis. And it, uh, it is, uh, the base of it is within five feet of the property line, which is where this landscape buffer area is in a quarter acre zone. In larger, in bigger zones, it's a bigger buffer. So, yeah, it's five feet and it comes off in three different spurs. Um, and each one of those is roughly five inches. One of them is further back than the five feet. So it's, it's a borderline, you know, situation. But Dennis, um, made it clear that there is no law in the tree permit, in the tree, um, uh, code. You can't take down a tree even when it's in a landscape buffer. You can do it. But if you do that, you then have to comply to the tree ordinance, which requires that you give back other trees. And you saw my letter. It does a calculation for it. Based on the diameter of the current tree and Dennis said the animal together, it comes up to fifteen inches. And twenty-five percent is what I'm supposed to give back in new trees. And all new trees are measured in a two and a half inch diameter caliber. So, so you see that, when you see our plans, you saw the re-proposed four new trees, each one with at least two and a half inch diameter caliber. So where we're required to have three and three-quarter inch, uh, total diameter, we're providing ten inches. So, just like in our, our wetland mitig, not wetland, the, the water, stormwater runoff mitigation, where we're not required to do any at all, and we're still doing it because we want to protect our property, we're going above and beyond the code for the tree ordinance. So you'll see my paperwork has been updated. Yes, we intend to remove one tree. Uh, another big thing to notice is I got rid of the FAR variance, even though it was only twelve percent. I want to try to make as minimal of a variance as possible as required by New York State. So, I came up with a clever solution to make the FAR disappear by eliminating half of the existing basement by making it not a basement, making it a crawl space. And, uh, after meetings with Tom DePaul and through legal, it was determined that what I've proposed is a hundred percent within code. So, now let's go on to look at some other things, some actual drawings. Uh, so, I, I don't want to redo the whole presentation from last time, but I had these lines on a map to show that almost every house in this neighborhood is non-conforming, mostly within, uh, with regard to the front yard setback. But you'll see that there are a lot of lots also that are, uh, narrow, long lots like the Hennessys. And, um, just to reiterate, that we were required by law to notify seven neighbors. You'll see them highlighted here in the red hatch. This is a Hennessy property. We notified, we sent the notice to this neighbor, but it's in the middle of being sold and we still have not been able to get a hold of anybody who may or may not be living there. But we did get letters of support from five other neighbors. And in fact, the neighbor who lives here sent a secondary letter today reiterating his support. And I'm not sure which one is number twenty over here, but late today, they also sent a very heartfelt letter expressing their heavy support for this application. They are residents of twenty-three years in the neighborhood and they are very excited, uh, about the Hennessy's proposal. So let's talk about character a little bit more. So what is character? Character is size, scale, aesthetics. It's a lot of different things that come into play. But part of it is, what are the shape of these lots? And you can see the Hennessys, which on the corner lot is long and narrow. But sellers number thirty-nine, forty-five, forty-nine. And you can see that I highlighted the existing footprints of those homes, all of which are two-story, full two-story houses, um, that are similar in depth, you can see here, to the highlighted proposed footprint on our lot. So, so as far as I'm concerned, the character, as far as the massing of the house and the footprint coverage is very similar to what's already existed on this, on this, in this neighborhood for many, many years. Okay, here you see they took away the FAR variance. Here you'll see, this is the existing, uh, survey. I personally went out and measured exactly where this tree is. There's the three little stems that come off of it and we were calling for it to be removed. Another thing that was brought up by the neighbor was this structure. This picture's over at the end. I'll show you. Also to be removed. And we also are gonna talk about the garage to be removed. So let's talk about screening for the moment. So I also went down last week, two weeks ago, and I stood on the neighbor's deck and I took photos that did not include where the existing Japanese maple tree is on their, on, on my client's property. So these trees you see here are on the neighbor's property. They provide excellent screening and in no way are we getting anywhere near any roots to those trees with our excavation if it's, if this is approved. Uh, here's another photo. I stand, I'm just standing further out of the deck. Their living room is over here. You can see a couple of high windows and privacy they already have asserted themselves is there, is existing. And there's a fully adequate screening just from their own property. But we're offered to do a little bit more even on our side. Uh, there is an existing hedge there. That hedge has been there and it's right next to the house. And it's alive and well and doing just fine in that little shady area, um, on both sides. So if we were to extend and put the building where we want it, where this deck is, we're gonna have a similar shaded area. And we expect those hedges to be just fine as they are. Uh, I also have, we are also going to retain Alan Pilch, who's maybe heard earlier, as our engineer and landscape architect. And my consultation with him about these hedges were, what's the root system, Alan? He said they extend no further than the footprint of the hedge, meaning that they're right in that two foot or three foot width. So our, the closest, our foundation is gonna get to the property line is five point three feet. Two of my contractors have told me, because I said, what do you need to over excavate the minimum to make our wall fit? Two feet. So the closest I'm getting to that hedge will be three feet. I'll even have our guys put up, and I'll put it in a resolution, a construction fence at three feet off the line to make sure nothing goes beyond that point. Let's see, what else did I do? Okay. Let's look at the other houses. Okay, go back to character. So about the scale and massing of our house, the last time I was here, I explained to you that we designed the new addition in kind of a split level situation where the ground level you walk right into to keep it at ground level. So the next floor above it is as low as possible to the ground, where the existing house. where the existing house is already about five feet above the ground. So we're purposely lowering the elevation of our addition, which by the way, I'll reiterate again, the Architecture Review Board loved it. So here's the difference between what we're proposing and what's already there. This is number thirty-nine, can you see the difference? You're coming in, this house on their side elevation is already about seven feet out of the ground. So yes, this looks like a bigger, more massive house, but it's because this whole section is elevated and now you're about two stories above it. I did that addition, I got variances for this project, nobody complained twenty years ago. Um, this is the house next door, once again, you see the floor elevation, you have to go up about six or seven steps just to get in the house and two stories above it. We purposely avoided that situation, uh, because of our relationship to the property line in this case. Also, I like what it looked like. Let's talk about the garage, I think that's next. So the garage, oh my god, it's not a garage, it's a shed. So, this, this, this structure is failing miserably. The ridge is dipped, the whole back quarter is dipped down. This is all, you can't see it as clear on this photo, but this is a, where'd it go? Hold on, where'd it go? There it is. If you look at this sideways, that's a level. The bubble isn't even in the glass, the wall is so sloped that it's literally falling to the north side. And this is right below, right where that, uh, level was taken. You can see there's no foundation whatsoever on this shed. So, this structure needs to come down, period. Um, they can't park in it because, I don't know if I have that picture here. Here's another picture showing how out square the building is. Um, inside the shed, they also, here. Somebody, I think the previous owner, maybe they're helping it from falling down, I'm not really sure. I lost it, hold on, sorry about this. They, uh, something was wrong with their floor and they actually built up about ten or twelve inches of concrete in here. So you literally go up a ramp to get at whatever level this floor is. You, it's literally impossible to park a car inside this thing. So the safest and smartest thing is to tear it down and relocate it where we showed it on the plans because other safety reasons that I mentioned in my letter, was that this is very close to the Elm Street property line and when you pull out of here, the, the only parking space they have on, right now, is right there. You can see the car, oh, that's the neighbor's car. But, right at the end of the driveway here is a twenty-four-inch diameter tree and you literally can't see at the sight distance when you're trying to pull out from four or five feet back from the road. So, that's that. This is that structure that's sitting on the ground, I don't know if I call it a structure. It's stones that have concrete around it that looks like it was built in the thirties. So, I don't know what its purpose was. It looks like a landscape decoration to me, but it's serving no purpose, has no historical value whatsoever and we want it to be removed. Does the board have any questions for me? Before I give the floor up?
Do all the other variances remain the same other than the, they are?
They do, sir, yes. Um, I don't know if you saw the letters from the neighbors, but I did print them out if you want them.
We have, we have. You no longer need a FAR variance?
No FAR.
No FAR, that's good. And all your other requests are unchanged?
Unchanged. We added some trees.
That was good. You have many, many neighbors, uh, in favor, even though you do have some in opposition.
We do.
We have to admit that. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this application?
Yes.
Please come on up.
Good evening, esteemed board members, I'm Liz Heenson, I reside in Ninety-Eight Bischof Avenue and I'm here to make public comment on the Twenty-One Ridgewood Terrace property, um, uh...
Before we get started, um, if you're going to reiterate anything that you did in our last meeting, please refrain from that, if you have anything new, you might, you might have to hear.
I have lots, yes. The, at the last meeting, we were rather shell-shocked because as you recall, we were told this was gonna be one tiny little mudroom maybe above something that existed and so we were a little bit unprepared. I think today we were trying to come more prepared. My mom actually tried to get in touch with Tom to go over all the numbers because there's concerns about the underlying numbers. But I'd like to first make my Ninety-Eight Bischof public comment and then I'll turn the floor over to the adjacent neighbor. Um, but, uh, so for my public comment from Ninety-Eight Bischof, which would be a separate comment, so it does not have any, nothing that was said previously would have bearing on this unless you already recorded Ninety-Eight Bischof as an opposition. Have you done that?
Not that I have in my record.
Okay. I think at this point, you have more, uh, resident taxpayer lots in opposition than for the development. I just want to point that out, but let me do my, my thing. So I share the Ridgewood Terrace neighborhood residents' concerns and add concerns that this proposed development is not in keeping with our most recent Newcastle comprehensive plan. As their architect indicated, we recently redid our comprehensive plan and I think part of it was to give the zoning board better direction in terms of what the residents wanted to see when you make choices to change the law for specific lots. So, um, as proposed, the change will change the character of the neighborhood and be a detriment to nearby properties. We're already seeing more water and you see that anytime you have new construction, it tends to lead to water issues. The architect here is indicating that the current garage does not have a floor and that any water running off the roof would easily go into the ground under it. Um, so again, it's a little disingenuous that he was including that in the whole, when we look at it, um, you know, we can make sense of it all to give the variances, but when we actually peel back and look at the logic of it, it starts to fall apart really quickly. Um, so I appreciate that he's hired to do something for a resident and he's, and, and, and I do appreciate that he has a good track record in Newcastle potentially. Um, but I personally know that anytime I'm at Eleven Ridgewood Terrace, I'm staring at that blue construction that he did up the street and it is really, the only benefit to creating a different facade is that I won't be staring at his other monstrosity up the street. Um, but, uh, let me keep going here. So, um, the variances requested are substantial and they do have adverse impact on the neighborhood. Uh, and they, the variances are being requested on the heels of a self-imposed hardship. Additionally, it is unclear whether the data supplied to the town about the property is accurate. In exploring the building permit denial, I talked to a lot of people about a lot of different things and everyone's like, "The comprehensive plan wouldn't allow that." "How are the building triple the size? This doesn't make sense, this doesn't make sense." And then I go digging and I, the numbers don't make sense either. Um, for example, how big is the house? So in twenty-nineteen, the zoning board approved a, a variance and in that application, the house was only eight-hundred-and-eighty square feet. And there has been no material change to that house since twenty-nineteen. Uh, and then Zillow says the house is fourteen thou-, is, uh, thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy-eight square feet and Mr. Lerner was saying something around sixteen-fifty-two. Um, and I'm not sure, I have a concern that in trying to get below FAR and trying to get this to go, to get the triple house going, that we might not have accurate numbers. So just for an example, the garage on a prior twenty-nineteen listing was, uh, was, was, uh, was different than what Mr. Lerner had. So, one of them was two-eighty-six and one of them was two-sixty-six. Uh, and that's a, you know, that's, these are, these are small but significant differences considering how hard you worked to get to not need the FAR variance. And I still think there is enough to say the, the variances they're requesting are substantial, but I would encourage you to recognize that these numbers need to be looked at again and that it's possible that his FAR calculation is inaccurate in some way because of the size of these things. And, um, and maybe Tim can speak to whether he remeasured everything and clarify that quickly because I'm not trying to hold anything up for any reason other than to do this professionally accurately and with least amount of water damage and other, um, issues. So, um, so as a taxpayer, as someone who resided in this town for over forty years now, who has been paying for my own home, I'm in my twentieth year, um, and I, I obviously grew up in that house on Ridgewood Terrace, this just does not sit well with me and my, my friends and fellow residents and the comprehensive plan. And for that reason, we're asking that you look at it from that angle too. I know you wanted the residents of the street to speak and I know that the Lamberts and the Decos and the Samuelsons and, uh, and others have spoken and indicated, uh, their feelings about this build, but I wanted you to know that this is not just Ridgewood Terrace. As you heard tonight, there are other properties that are being developed and even Mr. Lerner is pointing to a different development to say, "Hey, you should approve this because that was approved." So there are ramifications, I know you guys know all that, I won't belabor the point. I appreciate your time tonight. Um, and at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, Mr. Rosa Farkas and I, I'll assist them if they need help.
Good evening. Um, my name is Edat Farkas and, uh, he is Charles, my husband. And we live on, at eleven, we have the property on Eleven Ridgewood Terrace, which shares a long property boundary with Tony One Ridgewood Terrace. We and many of our neighbors and Newcastle residents are opposed to the current proposal for the building and demolition of Tony One Ridgewood Terrace. The proposal as it stands would triple, more than triple actually, the two-story facade along our shared property because the original, as it was shown on the drawing, is only extends to fourteen feet. Then the additional, the first portion of the mudroom, fifteen feet. Then the garage, fifteen-point-five feet. So it's more than, uh, triple the existing, uh, property, um, coverage of the land on that tiny lot. And, uh, this is simply too much to ask. We respectfully ask you to uphold the zoning reg-, regulation of Newcastle on our behalf, as of fifty-five years residents and taxpayers in good standing. Please deny the requested variances.
Good evening, good evening. I'm Charles Farkas, husband of Sredi. We have a letter for you summarizing your thoughts for you. And thank you very much for attention and time.
So the Farkases, you can stay here, Mom. Well, actually, you, you prefer to sit, sorry, she prefers to sit. Um, not to be TMI. Okay, so the Farkases would just like to address a few things that came up in, um, the architect's presentation. Um, the, uh, the other house he mentioned is in a hillside, which also changes things because when you put a continuous facade on flat land, um, you really are creating a wall and it really does, uh, enclose, uh, the adjacent property and crush the solar shed. Uh, and that is, um, not something that can be mitigated through any kind of screening. Uh, the current deck, I believe, is illegal, but it's only one story and it screened with the trees. And as Mr. Lerner indicated, there's a beautiful peach tree that he has a picture of. Um, and we had, uh, we had, uh, Tom Williamson come out and tell us, does he think that the hedge and the trees could survive the construction? Um, and he said it's very iffy, but I can tell you that we were talking about if they, if, you know, we were saying with, um, if they were doing their construction on their, you know, within five feet of our border and he was looking at the canopy of the pear tree and I can tell you right now that if, if we need to, if they need to, um, excavate closer to our, to the Farkas's property than five feet, he will kee-, kill the existing pear tree, fruit-bearing pear tree, original to the property. Um, he will kill that tree, um, for sure. And the apple tree that he did, that he may or may not have shown on the, um, on the photo, that apple tree is even closer to the property line. Um, and, um, and so certainly there, there is concern that the pear tree would definitely not survive and that the apple tree would, we're not sure what would happen with that. Um, and we agree that the private shrubbery, um, is likely to be able to withstand construction. It just doesn't do anything in terms of, um, mitigating the, the overask. Um, you know, it's, it's one thing to want to do an addition on your property, it's another thing to, uh, within a year buying a property, tell your neighbor that they're gonna be staring at more than, you know, three times as much house. And, um, uh, so that's, that's really the concern, um. And I, and the numbers, we would really like to understand because this is substantial and he's, the neighbor's trying to eliminate variances, but it, the numbers that they're starting with don't seem to make sense. A single-car garage, a standard single-car garage is two-hundred-and-forty square feet and they're saying it's dilapidated, you can't fit a car in it, then it would be suspected to be smaller than that, which would mean that the half of it that goes into that floor area ratio would be less. And so again, I, I question, um, the creativity that came, that got us to avoid that variance. Also, uh, you know, putting, I'm sure after the last rain, unfortunately, my kids are camp and the picture of the pooled water on the ground in their backyard is on his phone. Um, but the water was pooling in their yard and I'm sure that's when they decided we need to trench drain here and that does take two inches and great, then we're not doing FAR. So it wasn't that they were trying to accommodate their neighbor, it was that they really have a serious water issue that they are underappreciating because they've only been there for a year. And, um, my mother has indicated that, uh, a tree was cut down on the other, the other side and that already she's seeing water pool on the other property, um, where it hadn't been pooling before. Um, and at this point, I don't believe that the, that the some pump at Ridgewood Terrace has gone off more frequently, um, or processed more water than typical. Uh, but that's something that we will be monitoring closely because obviously we're, we know that with any construction on these quarter-acre lots or smaller, I think theirs is, uh, much smaller than that. Um, we have, you know, we have, we have these issues and we all have to exist in this space and it's not fair to, um, you know, to create an entire huge hardship like this on everybody. Thank you. you. Did you want me to add anything?
No.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, would you like to respond to some of these comments?
Only a couple of things. My numbers are correct. My numbers only have to answer to one person. He's sitting right there. He's looked at my numbers more than once. My numbers are dead on accurate. And honest to God, the FAR code here, it's not the easiest thing to figure out for layman. Yes, half the garage is what counts. Half the basement is what counts. There's part on the second floor that doesn't count. It's just the way it is. Now, when they talked about tripling the size of the house, wrong. The FAR is going from like fifteen, fifty-six, we're adding two sixty-something to it. It's right on the sheet. So that's not tripling. I mean, not even a third. And as far as actual livable floor area, which is different from FAR, the existing floor area of that house, not including the garage or the basements where you can actually live, is fifteen oh six. We are adding a thousand square feet, ballpark, not triple. It's going to be a twenty-five-hundred square foot house at the end of the day. The average American house. That's it.
May I say something to that?
Go ahead.
The average American house in that neighborhood does not create what appears to be the size of three houses in a facade. That's the issue. And I honestly don't know how. It's only a thousand square feet. It's magic. Because it, on his plan, by his feet, I'm using, I'm using the architect's numbers to give you the fourteen feet, the fifteen point, uh, five and the fifteen. That's the architect's numbers.
I have an auto cam program that run a polyline around the whole house. It tells me exactly what the area is down to a hundredth of an inch. Good God.
What else?
The architect got like really mad.
The architect.
He actually like stormed off.
Who's that?
Somebody in themselves.
If somebody online would like to address this issue, please identify yourself. No.
Anybody online should mute, should mute themselves unless they're speaking to this application.
Anybody else in this audience would like to address this application? No. I'd like to make a motion that we close this public hearing.
I second the motion.
You have a hand raised? Hold on, our motion. Okay, we'll put them on.
Hi. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Please identify yourself.
Uh, we're a couple, so it's Dan Pernizny and Lynn Lambert. We live at fifty-five Ridgewood Terrace.
Okay.
Um, I don't envy you guys having to make these decisions, but our neighborhood is, it is kind of unique. And I think it, it does, uh, it, there are some similar, um, neighborhoods in town, but, um, but ours are as, um, as Liz Hameson has pointed out, very small properties. And, um, and so the, the, the laws of how close together, uh, we are, I know that probably many of the houses are grandfathered, but to invade those, those protections that we have for, for privacy and sort of breathing space on our small lots, um, should be by far and away the exception. It should never be the norm, because otherwise, we're just chock-a-block, you know, uh, with a couple of feet between our houses. And, um, those spaces between houses that we have right now and what we bought, no, you know, knowing that, feeling that we were protected and that we would have at least this much space, um, side to side, um, I think invading that is a very serious issue. And of course, we're not the, in an affluent neighborhood. We're in more a, um, a working class, lower middle class, middle, middle class neighborhood. Um, but we still need your protection so that we can maintain the homes that we bought and we love and we've lived in for, for many, many years. Um, the Farkases, more than anyone we know, uh, should qualify for that protection. So we hated to see that all these variant, their variants were, were being proposed. And, um, we, we'd like to make sure that they, uh, get the protection that, that, um, that, uh, is afforded in other parts of town. And in fact, most other parts of town have more property. So if you've got a half an acre, if you've got an acre, and if you've got two acres, and you add on as much, um, space, um, it, it may not impact anyone. But in a neighborhood like ours, it impacts us very much. And I would, I would hope that you could offer us protection, not to see these houses get closer together than they are, for one thing. Um, move, um, things like garages closer to the street. I mean, this, this house is on, uh, on the corner of two streets. So visually, um, everyone's going to be able to see it from basically three, three sides. So any, um, making that house bigger is going to impact us. And we walk past or drive past at least once, once a day. Um, lots of big walking neighborhood. People come from all around to walk on our blocks. We, we love that. Um, we love our small town feel. And, and we don't, we don't want McMansions. Uh, we want, we want people to be able to feel safe, that their investment is protected from infringement by overbuilding on these tiny lots. So I'd like to speak, you know, go super seriously in, in favor of the, the Farkas family to get to maintain the privacy and space that they are used to having. Um, and thank you for hearing me out. I don't know if my husband wants to say something too.
Yes, I, uh, basically, uh, I'm in agreement with, with my wife, which is a good thing. Uh, I, I appreciate your time, and I appreciate your consideration regarding the surrounding neighborhood and its current charm. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to, uh, address this issue online or in the room? No. Okay. I'll make a motion. We close the public hearing. I'll make a motion. We close the public hearing.
I second.
Chairman Giordina?
Aye.
Mike Nolan?
Aye.
Howard Dubs?
Aye.
Ron Jenzick?
Aye.
Okay, I'll let the opinion comments from the board at this time.
Hi, Mr. Lawrence, one question for you. Uh, the, um, the original FAR was twenty-one eighty-three, I think that was going to be the total floor area. And, and is that different now?
We knocked off two hundred and twenty square feet from eliminating the half basement, the existing half basement. So the final number is nineteen twenty, which complies.
All right, nineteen twenty. And then, um, the, the, uh, existing size of the house is, do you know how many square feet that is?
You should come up to the microphone. So then the public can hear you. Do not at the microphone. The public can't hear you.
I just want to clarify.
Do you want the fire sprinkler area, the floor area ratio, or the actual floor area?
Just the, this existing size of the house, is that, just trying to get that.
Where people live?
Yeah.
Fifteen, fifteen fifty-six or something like that. I don't have it in front of me.
And then the addition.
About a thousand, just over a thousand.
And the addition is.
Less than a hun- less than eleven hundred for the addition.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Somebody want to make a motion?
I'm going to give this to the chairman. Mr. Chairman, you take this.
Let me take this one.
Chair, do you want to poll the board to see what their opinion is as far as, um, whether they're in favor or against at this point before making the motion, or how do you want to?
Well, I don't think that's necessary. Tim's willing to take a gamble.
Okay.
We're here to make a decision one way or another. Okay, I'll, I'll make the motion. I'm going to make a motion that the application, has the applications for a lot of variances here. Front, front yard, uh, front yard variance at the second floor addition of twenty-six feet. The front yard variance at the second floor addition on Route, that was on Elm Street. On Ridgewood, for twelve feet. The front yard, two-story addition for various, for a two-story addition at Elm Street, Elm Street for seventeen feet. Uh, front yard for a proposed porch on Elm Street of twelve feet. Uh, front yard variance for the relocation of the generator of eleven feet. Front yard variance for a patio of twenty-two feet. And a front yard variance for the parking area of fourteen feet. Um, and let's see, and a side yard variance, uh, at the addition of four, of five feet. I think I got them all right.
Yeah, you did.
Okay. I'll, I'll make a motion that those variances be approved for the following reasons. Um, we have had numerous letters from the, the neighbors, both for this application and against this application, um, and taking those into consideration, and taking into consideration that this is an old neighborhood, where a lot of, most, a lot of the houses is, uh, who are still not, uh, up to modern standards. Uh, and this proposal will help to bring one more into, uh, into a modern standard situation. Uh, the, the granting of the variance will not create an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood. The character of this neighborhood has been increasingly changing and being brought, bringing, uh, being brought up to modern standards. Uh, this point has been in, uh, in, um, in, uh, in contact with, uh, many of these homes through the years, granting variances where required. Uh, the, the Planning and Zoning Board and Planning and Architectural Board has approved, uh, the, the updating of this neighborhood. There are no other way to achieve this desired method, the desired benefit, other than to, uh, grant the variances. Um, the variances are in some instances substantial, in some instances not substantial, uh, but due to the unique situation and character of the area, uh, this should not, uh, affect our granting or denial. Uh, there will be no adverse on the physical environment condition of the neighborhood. There have been some talk about water problems. Uh, there have been water problems in this area for years and years and years. This will not exacerbate these problems or relieve it them either. Uh, the architect has done a, a remarkable job in trying to reduce the water situation there by creating rain gardens and drainage areas that will help to retain the, uh, the runoff on the site that were going to be treated and discharged into a storm drain. Um, this is technically a self-created hardship, in that everything on that street is technically a self-created hardship. Uh, this, this should not be, uh, determinative on our decision. Um, even, even though it is a technically self-created hardship, the, the factor of, uh, of benefit to the applicant will far outweigh any detriment to the town or this community. Uh, didn't give us foundation surveys prior to framing. Um, start within six months and finish within a year. Uh, move that we grant.
Second the motion.
Chairman Giordina?
Aye.
Mike Nolan?
Aye.
Howard Dubs?
Aye.
Ron Jenzick?
Aye.
You have your variance.
Thank you so much. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, Damiano?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Now, yes. Please, please identify yourself.
Hi, Mark Damiano and, uh, my wife Christina Damiano. Um, yeah, so we're trying to build a shed. Um, just a little tight on space in the house. Um, the property's a little bit unique. The backyard's very sloped. The front yard, when I was looking at the setback requirements, it required me to put a shed in the middle of my front yard, which wasn't really ideal. Um, so I was trying to find a spot that would, I guess, not require me to cut down any trees and also require the least amount of variances. Um, there's no neighbor abutting the front yard, which my front yard is both, I guess I have two front yards, uh, Main Street and Crow Hill Road. So this would kind of be tucked in the corner, um, of my front yard, uh, with Crow Hill Road on the other side. So, uh, yeah. And, uh, in terms of, you know, character of, of the, the house and, and the shed, we're, um, what we're ordered or planning to, I guess, order, it's going to be, basically look just like our house. So we have a vinyl wrap, uh, colonial. It's going to be a vinyl wrap shed, shutters. It should look, you know, kind of like it matches. Um, and yeah, I guess that's really all I have unless, uh, you need anything else.
The primary reason for the variance is because you want to put the shed in an area where you don't have to take trees down. Is that correct?
Right. I didn't want to have to like cut into the hill, um, and where I'm putting it. Right, exactly. So I, I won't have to take any trees down. It, it just, it's too close to Crow Hill Road. I think it's a forty-foot, uh, setback. And to make it so it, you know, works, I think it, I need a thirteen-foot variance. I think it's twenty-seven feet. My numbers are, if I'm remembering correctly, so, uh, yeah.
And i- is there, there's no way you can put the shed in an area where it wouldn't require a variance?
Not without basically putting it, like, the backyard, even, anywhere I put it, I'm going to require a variance. There's, there's no area, um, just the way the house is situated on the lot. Uh, it's kind of sideways. So like, if you're looking at the house from Main Street, what I'm calling the backyard is really like side yard, and then the front yard is on the other side. There, any, anywhere I'm going to put a shed, uh, is going to require some sort of variance. Either it's going to require, you know, a, a front yard variance from Main Street and Crow Hill, or, you know, a backyard variance and a side yard variance. It's just too tight. And then the only other usable part of my backyard is too heavily sloped. I would have to really build, and I don't think it would make sense. I think, I think what I'm doing is sort of the least, um, the least harm, least inconvenience. And I, and, and like I said, because there's no neighbor there, and I mean, we even, you know, this isn't such, and our neighbors were like, you know, have at it.
So, so your, your shed is going to be on the Crow Hill roadside of your, of your property and going up, up Crow Hill Road from your property. How close is the nearest neighbor, approximately?
I mean, there, you have to go on the other side of the street.
But on Crow Hill, there's, I'm, what I'm trying to gather is there, is there a house next to you that would be impacted by the, this, this shanty?
No, no, no. No, it's, it's really like, no, there's nobody. The, the other, our neighbors who would be off of our backyard are setback, um, back by where our house is. So it's, you know, and their front yard is heavily sloped and, you know, they don't really, it's not really used. The, they have a driveway that they drive up to their house. So it's, it's really bothering nobody there.
I see. Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this application or anybody online?
No hands are raised.
No hands are raised. Anybody here? No hands are raised. Nobody. Okay. So I'll move, we close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing.
Want to second that?
Oh, I second that.
Chairman Giordina?
Aye.
Mike Nolan?
Aye.
Howard Dubs?
Aye.
Ron Jenzick?
Aye.
Any, any comments from the board? Go ahead. Anybody, anybody, Howard?
No, looks good.
Want to make a motion?
Yeah. Uh, I make a motion, uh, that we grant, um, a thirteen-foot, uh, front, it's a, it's a front yard variance, uh, front yard variance, uh, uh,
Yep.
To, um, Mark Damiano of, uh, One Main Street, uh, um, Cisco Park, Mount Cisco, uh, for the following reasons. Um, there really is no other location, uh, for the shed to be, uh, located. Um, there, if the shed is put in fact in another area of the property, um, the odds are that need a variance there as well. Uh, the land slopes in the back. Uh, the land slopes in the back, which makes it difficult to put, uh, a shed in an area where you wouldn't need a variance. Um, so I think, uh, with the owner has put a lot of thought into where he wants to put the shed, uh, and for the following reasons, the, uh, the granting of the variance will not create, uh, an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. Uh, the benefits offered by the applicants cannot be achieved by any other feasible method as he needs additional storage. Uh, the requested variance i- is not substantial, uh, and, and as mentioned, there really is no other feasible location for the shed. Uh, it will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. Uh, there are no neighbors who are present who have written, um, uh, in opposition to the variance. Uh, it is not a self-created hardship as the lot is a, um, a, a small lot and there really is no other way to do this. Uh, there would be six months to start, one year to finish. Do we?
Survey.
We need a survey? Okay, so we'll, uh...
Final survey.
Final survey. We need a final as-built survey, uh, for the property, for the, for the building as you put it in.
I'll second that.
Chairman Giardino?
Hi.
Mike Nolan?
Hi.
Howard Dobbs?
Hi.
Ron Jenzik?
Hi.
You have your variance. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, okay, uh, next is, um, Letterman Revocable Trust.
Good evening, your name is Tortorella of Hockerman Tortorella and Waxstein. I am counsel for, uh, the Letterman Revocable Trust. And if I can this evening, I am participating also by Zoom so that we can do our presentation by sharing our screen, if that's all right. I wanted to let you know who else is joining us this evening. Uh, Peter Scott, who is our civil engineer, P W Scott Engineering and Architect. He's working on the project with us and, uh, importantly, we have the occupants of the property at seven eighty-three King Street, Larry Letterman and Kitty Hawks, who that we have resided there for, uh, over thirty years. Um, we're here this evening because we need, um, a coverage, a development coverage variance. And if I can share my screen, uh, I would like to start by sharing the survey that we submitted. This is one of those instances on Zoom where I can actually tell whether you can see what's on the screen or not. This is the survey that was prepared by T C Merits, um, for the property. And the property at issue of seven eighty-three is outlined in red on this survey. We have a number of different structural improvements. I just want to run through them quickly. Um, the main, the existing residence, main residence is here and we have a cottage here, both which are circa nineteen thirty. They predated the, the zoning regulations. Uh, there are two patios, one with each residence that we have and where I'm indicating here. Uh, there was a pool that was constructed in or around two thousand and five in the, in this location on the property. And a garage structure, which is located, um, in this general vicinity right here. Um, actually, it used to be exposed, but over time, our clients have actually kind of buried it into the ground and put a green roof over it. So while it is a structure, um, it's actually been camouflaged into the building. We have one driveway from our access on King Street. So it starts here and we have one driveway that takes us down to the garage area and the area in front of the main residence. People who are using, living in the cottage actually have parked in that vicinity and then have to walk over to the cottage over in this location. So we really have a very contained kind of parking area on the property. We also have a number of stone walls and pathways that you'll see throughout the property on this diagram here. Um, we have, uh, an entry, a patio area, not really patio area, but an entrance to the main residence where there actually have been some planters constructed. And a lot of the property has a very shallow bedrock. And they found, the, the Letterman found over time, that was very difficult to plant any vegetation on the property. And the only way to really make vegetation take, other than grass, was to actually create conditions where you could have a deeper root system for a number of different kinds of plants. And that's why, what you, what you'll see in some of the photographs I'll show you shortly is why they have created a number of different planting beds and, and planter structures on the property. And then those structures are actually contributing quite a bit to what we're talking about here with the additional coverage on the property. Um, what brings us here this evening is that, uh, our clients wanted to construct an addition, it's really, it's mostly subterranean addition, a subterranean addition onto the existing residence so that they could take an existing restroom in the building in the main residence and convert it to a handicap accessible bathroom. It's a very small room and it's awkwardly shaped as it currently exists so that you cannot get into it and actually use a walker, let alone any sort of wheelchair where you'd need access. The, the reason it's important to have this improvement on the property is because the house is built into a hillside. And over the years, they, they've been at the property since about nineteen ninety-two. Over the years, they've done a couple of additions, not a lot, but a couple of additions, basically working with the existing topography and the existing building. So they built a second, a floor above what was originally there when they moved in. And that's the entrance to this location here and some of this building. And then they also have conjoined, um, an outbuilding that was in this vicinity to the main residence. What happens as a consequence of how they have worked with the topography is that they end up with a house with three levels. And three levels where you can only get from floor to floor by climbing stair. Um, and it presents a mobility issue for them within the, within the residence itself, which they're trying to address by being able to create, in effect, the ability to have a master suite on the first floor. And that would include a bathroom that was handicap accessible. They thought that they were pursuing a good idea by trying to make it subterranean and attach it onto the existing part of the residence where the existing restroom lies. Um, the plumbing is all there. It would require very little disturbance. Um, it would not require removal of any trees. They, they thought it was a win-win solution. They made an application to the building department for a building permit, um, back in the, the late fall of last year, twenty twenty-two. And all of a sudden, it became apparent that there actually was more development coverage on the property than the zoning permitted, something that caught them completely off guard and, and unawares. Some of that development coverage, um, you know, there was an, an amount of development coverage pre their ownership, but over time, really as a landscaping project, they have added some walkways so that they can have mobility outside on the property and then built some stone walls and, um, some step areas so that they can find access to some garden areas. So you look at this diagram and you see kind of what I would describe as a, a fairly busy diagram. I want to share this diagram with you now. And it'll show you what you actually, what the property actually looks like. This is an aerial photograph that Mr. Scott has assembled for us. And this is what you see. The busyness that you saw on the T C Merit survey is not, bless your, is not nearly as extensive as when you actually look at the site. We have our main entrance here. We've got a beautiful garden that was created here, the main entrance come down to what I would call a very, very, um, sparse parking area in this location. Uh, the main, we have our residence here, we have the pool, we have the cottage, the accessory cottage. And then what you see in, in a little bit lighter color is some of the walkways, existing walkway area, but then also here, this is some of the new construction that I think has happened since two thousand and seven. We use two thousand and seven kind of as a threshold because that's when the stormwater regulations went into effect. Uh, the Letter, um, the Letterman Revocable Trust owns this property at seven ninety-one King Street. So the purpose of making this connection was to actually provide access from that residence to this property. And this is all gardening. We have a stone wall here, a stone wall planter that enabled some planting to occur here and some trees and some other plants here. At one time, there was a, a large tree in this location during the tornado in twenty twenty, I think it was, August twenty twenty, uh, that tree came down. And there was a concern because it, it again showed very, um, very narrow root system, um, and, and very shallow root system. And so there was a need and an interest to be able to create opportunities to be able to, um, have more plantings and more landscaping on the property. Just to show you for a minute, um, to get a sense of what the building is like, I want to run you through some photographs that we had a chance to put together for you. My mouse wants to work. So this is a photograph right from the entrance, you know, from the beginning of the, of the street. And you come down the driveway and what you can see here, again, stone walls that support plantings. There's some walkways that were created to take you into the large garden area. Uh, we proceed down the driveway and midway down, again, we see some more, we see more planting area. We see the, the driveway, um, some firms that were planted in this section. It takes you right to the front of the entrance to the property. This is the front entrance. This area here, again, a very shallow bedrock. So at the time that, um, Mr. Letterman and, and Ms. Hawks actually did their addition and made the connection to the outbuilding, um, they converted what was some impervious surface in this area to actually make a more attractive and functional entrance. And they created these planters because they could not grow anything in this location. So we have two nice tree planters, which are the only reason they're able to have these kinds of improvements, um, landscape improvements in the front of the house. You also see quite a bit of landscaping over to the right in that photograph. Where, this is the walkway that takes you to a pool. The pool is actually back here, but it's nicely hidden. Again, you can get the sense of the extent of landscaping that was done here over time in order to kind of create a, a beautiful garden feel on the property and a park-like feel on the property. You go down that walkway and if you go to the left here, you go towards the pool. And if you go to the right, you're going to head towards the cottage and seven ninety-one King Street. This is a location along the walkway, heading to seventy nine, ninety-one King Street, where they created the stone wall area so that they would support plantings. And this is the rose garden that they created on the property. Again, all of these improvements were for the purpose of creating gardens. It was, it was more of a landscaping project than any other type of project. And, um, i- if you ask our clients, they had no understanding or appreciation that when it was landscaping connected, that there was any additional permit or approval that was required. They were not building any what they considered to be building or structure. I want to point out here along the walkway, you can see that these stones are spaced apart, that you've got a, um, fair amount of greenery that grows between them, um, that, you know, the hope is that that will deal with stormwater runoff. That was the intention at the time. You've got the stone wall here that enables them to plant in this vicinity. Again, a- all for the purpose of kind of trying to create a nice ecological and, and, and very beautiful aesthetic effect. This is the pool area. Um, we have a number of different planted areas here that, that have been created by them over time. What you can't see in this photograph, but if you were to be down on this side of the pool, um, there is actually another kind of planter that was created on the backside of the pool or the right side of the pool as you're walking down, uh, in which they have also landscaped. This is the back area of the property. This patio was existing when they purchased the property, but what they have done was create opportunities to, um, plant, it's at least five or six trees in this location. It adds screening, it adds beauty and aesthetics. It's a ni- it's a nice natural environment, uh, certainly good for the, um, you know, environmental conditions. Uh, it, it permits some shade to be in that area, um, which addresses issues that people are concerned about now with, with climate action. Um, the whole idea here was to make this area usable and to not have only grass in the vicinity of the property, which is what they were facing before. This is just a side view of the house, again, landscaping project, um, plants and bushes that were planted. I think over time, if they counted, they probably have added fifty trees alone, forgetting any kind of bushes or anything like, like that to the property. This is just a view from the main lawn to the driveway. You see it right in this vicinity here. More views of the front lawn. These are the kind of walkways that we're counting here that are, are contributing to putting us over the coverage. Again, notice all of the greenery that grows in between the stepping stones. And this is a fairly narrow brick walkway that takes you around some of the planted area. You have King Street up in this vicinity here. So the plantings also, you know, give a visual screening and they also absorb some of the noise from along King Street. Uh, th- this is our star dog. This is the garage that I mentioned that is now actually has a green roof on it. So what you can see here is that these stone walls were added. It enabled them to plant in this location. There's another stone wall over here as well, which enabled them to plant. And then the plantings come down the slope and onto the top of the roof. They did that after they had an investigation to make sure that it would be structurally sound to do. But again, you know, taking away, in effect, taking away, uh, impervious character and adding landscaping. This is the tree that's up in the center of the big lawn area that fell down in twenty twenty. And as you can see, uh, it's got a fairly shallow root system to address that condition because they didn't want to leave it barren. They built this planter, which now contains trees and other plantings in it. So again, beautifying the site, adding to uptake of stormwater. Uh, it achieves a number of different, uh, I think ecological and environmental benefits as well as being, um, you know, a, a, a benefit to our client aesthetically. The improvements that they've done on, over time, in terms of structural improvements or building improvements, really are limited to the addition of a, of a second floor, which is now the main residence floor, and conjoin, joining the two buildings. They also did an addition onto the cottage because the family living there at the time needed a little bit more space. Uh, but otherwise, they really haven't done much in the way of building improvements. They spent the last eighteen years or so on this landscaping project and those are the kinds of improvements that they've done. Uh, they have taken some trees down over time. They got permits for those trees, but that was really kind of post-two thousand and twenty when they had the, the, the big tree fall down and they got concerned about trees that were close to the house. And so they tried to, uh, address those trees by, um, removing ones that were somewhat , uh, circumspect in the character. You know, what they're trying to accomplish here is to be able to live in their house long-term. They want to stay there. Um, if there comes a time where they can't care for themselves, they want to be able to live out there, years there. They are not going to be able to do that if they have, um, no ability to have a handicap accessible bathroom on the, on the main level. I don't even know what to call the first floor and what to call the second floors, so I call it the main level where you go in. Um, and, and they want to be able to keep this park-like setting that they can enjoy, um, throughout the rest of their time living in Newcastle. Those are really the benefits that they're look, looking to achieve here. They don't want to add any more building other than that small addition. They don't want to add any more building other than that small addition. They're not looking to convert anything to parking area. You know, they're they're all about less than than more in terms of, you know, parking pavement and and conditions that kind of add to the heat of the environment and the climate. And they're really to try to make this, you know, aesthetically pleasing for them as well as environmentally beneficial. There will be no impact on the character of neighborhood or detriment to neighboring properties. Maybe seeing the the stone walkways and walls and steps that have been created that this variance would permit to remain are not, you know, they're mainly at grade when you're talking about the walkways and the steps. No one can see them from off-site locations. And the stone walls have some height to them, but they blend in beautifully, I think, and I think add a lot of character to the property. I don't think that anybody would say that they are adverse to the to the character or the beauty of the community. The only new construction we're talking about is an approximate one hundred square foot addition for the bathroom. And that's, you know, we did a measurement, at least a hundred and thirty feet from any property line. And and to the extent it's subterranean, it's really well camouflaged. So it's not, you know, a massive building that's going to change the appearance of the property if there were anybody to see it. But the way this property is situated, there isn't anybody who sees it. The Letterman Revocable Trust owns three of the abutting lots. DEP owns one of the lots. Dark Hollow Lake Association owns another of the abutting lots. The only residents, you know, who who live in proximity are across the street. And we have provided you with a copy of a letter of support from the owners at seven ninety King Street. So and I have copies of that if you have not seen that, so we're happy to share that with you. So I think it'd be hard pressed to find any kind of detriment to the character of the community. And and one of the reasons for that is because there won't be any material change in the environmental or physical condition on the property. I mean, all of these improvements that they've made have been positive in terms of the environment. And you're adding maybe a hundred square feet of additional impervious surface with the addition. And Mr. Scott will speak in a couple of minutes about how it's it's not going to be difficult to address that in terms of stormwater management or other mitigation that might be required under your regulations. So, you know, I think we really aren't in a situation where we have any kind of community impact as a result of this, other than to be a positive one. Because and if you know the site, I I've known the site for years without knowing the the owners. I mean, I've driven that section of King Street quite a bit. I've always noticed kind of the the beauty along that frontage. And I don't, none of, none of what we're proposing here will will adversely impact that. The submission that we made to you, we did address alternatives. You know, we don't see alternatives that eliminate the variance. But since the time of making that submission, Mr. Scott has come on board on the team. He has looked at stormwater issues. We have looked at other impervious surfaces on the property. And I'd like him to be able to take some time now and just talk to you about some compromises and and alternatives or ways that we can reduce some of that coverage on the property that we've evaluated and then how we can mitigate other aspects of it. I'll just pull this up for him first.
Good evening. My name is Peter Scott. I'm a resident architect and a licensed professional engineer. We went to the site and we're not quite used to going to a site so heavily planted already before we even arrived. But when we looked at it, I think in the spirit of meeting the ordinance, I spoke to Bob about it. What we decided to do is to, for the bathroom addition, we proposed a rain garden and all the math has been completed appropriately, which would take the roof runoff from that hundred square foot. And we're creating a rain garden of about three hundred square feet, three times the size of our impervious. And it's noted on the plan in a strategic area where we're not impacting any trees. We're extending a wall to sort of contain the rain garden. And that's one way how we treat that for both treatment and attenuation. We also discussed with the client is that we have other ways to bring this more into conformance. A red square behind this cottage, you'll notice a red crosshatched area. And we're suggesting that we remove seven hundred and fifty-two square foot of impervious area, which is now a patio, and make that into a lawn. It's a it's a very good fix for the project. And again, we're trying to mitigate the necessity or the extent of the variance. In terms of stormwater management, we have an interesting situation here. My client owns various pieces of property, including direct discharge to the Dark Hollow Lake. And if you notice on the left-hand side, outside the property per se, but a piece of property that they have to the north, there's a existing stream course, which both collects a lot of runoff from our property and runs it into a a a large pond or lake within a watershed, which is about one point two miles away from the Kensco Dam property. So by analyzing, we looked briefly at the at the stormwater management impacts, which are mitigated by this very large pond. And our findings are is that because the watershed going to that pond is measured in square miles of watershed. And we're talking about a maximum of twelve thousand square feet for the entire improvement area of question with our property. We've been mitigating this site from the day it was constructed with that pond. And there's no direct impact to any neighbors because this property all drains directly to either the pond or a watershed discharging from the pond itself. And also on the watershed, once it enters into this DEC wetland, which we are beyond the setback, the water all flows unencumbered right to the Kensco Dam. So there's no impact to any neighbors in terms of any stormwater we could actually create. Another finding we we came upon is that by a proper use of aesthetics on the site, everything they built actually constitutes a treatment device. And the New York State DEC watershed regulations recognize tree pits as stormwater management treatment. And as Jerry has indicated to you in our presentation, they built tree pits all across the property. And our findings, we we created a map that basically says that almost every portion of the property as built drains to a tree pit, which is a treatment device. So we, they meet the requirements of the New York State DEC manual. Even though they proceeded the manual in most of their applications, they're fully compliant of any improvements they made since two thousand and seven. And we we have a document that will prove that to Bob. And the last item is the extent of the variance, as Jerry discussed, is somewhat dictated by the interpretation of the surveyor. The improvements we're talking about are actually on the right-hand side of the property on that map that you see before you. And it shows a planting, a planting area on the property line. If I get my arrow removed. I can't find the arrow.
I see it.
Oh, I see there it is. Oh, there it is. It's very active. It's sensitive. Am I upside down there? Yeah, you can point that out.
Sure, you want to do right here.
Yeah, right there. That area right there is the impact that has been determined by our office through an inspection of of Google mapping from nineteen ninety-seven to the present. And that's where the improvements took place in that area. And so what what took place is the surveyor didn't, well, he could not take a, the walkway as it's built into perspective in calculating development coverage. Because as you saw in the pictures that we that we showed you, this is, while it's a walkway and it's counted as a walkway, it's not, it's not continuous. It has gaps in it throughout. And you're actually stepping on isolated stones in the area that they constructed. So only because of the way your ordinance is written, it was the only way possible we could create that coverage amount was to count the the perimeter of the walkway, but not how it's constructed. So literally, you're, we, you're counting independent stones surrounded by grass as a walkway in question. Another item that's included in the analysis by the surveyor is that a large area surrounded by stone walls, which is all planted. But again, because they made this walkway with isolated stones and circling all those little bubbles you see in that one area, that also skews our need for variance beyond what really is there. Again, these are all isolated walkways and steps and individual stones. The walls are containing vegetation. All the water drains to these walls and is treated by the vegetation that they planted. So we've talked about attenuation. It's already accomplished by the dam. We have it exists. We've talked about stormwater treatment. It exists as well throughout the site. And our our discussion with Bob is we will prove to him that we meet all the requirements for treatment per the New York State DEC manual. And again, for this one item, which is the bathroom, we're trying to move forward if we could, possibly move that forward. Again, we propose a rain garden three times the size of the impervious developed. And on top of that, from a hundred square feet of impervious, we're subtracting seven hundred and fifty-two square foot of impervious. So we've reduced the impervious by six hundred and fifty-two square feet, or six times what was proposed with this bathroom. So again, it's a quandary of interpretation of codes, the manner in which they created the property, that is, their overall intent throughout the process was to make beautiful lawn areas and using retaining walls, which are, which count unfortunately for development coverage. But they, they're not technically adding to the total in a way that in a manner which they're used. It's just a lot of walls. And that's the problem.
So, you know, to that point, picking up on what Peter said, this is, if there's ever been a situation where you could kind of see where the code is written, this doesn't really fit into the code and the intent of the code, right? It's not, it's not a situation where the where the improvements that were made really are addressing the problems that the the code, the coverage and the and the stormwater regulations are necessarily concerned with addressing and controlling. You see this property, you don't get the impression of a shopping center parking lot, even though the number may make it sound like that. You get the feel of a park-like effect and setting. And and that's all we're trying to achieve and accomplish here. I recognize that if you do the math mathematically, it is, sounds like a very substantial variance. But under controlling precedent and and also with the way that you're supposed to look at it qualitatively in the absence of an impact, that number really should not be given much weight. It's really the qualitative question about what the impact of that variance is on both community character, on the environment, and on the enjoyment of properties by by nearby property owners. You self-created hardship, I rarely see situations where, you know, you can't make a case that there's some form of self-created hardship or not. We built it. Nobody's saying that, not saying that we didn't build it. It really done as part of a landscaping project. But as your board knows, that's that's not a controlling factor or dispositive. We have this, you know, what I'm going to ask you to do, or just what I want, what I want to make sure I convey to you is that we have some immediate need to be able to move ahead with the bathroom construction. Over the course of the last twelve, fourteen months, our clients have had a number of health issues. It's made it more real to them that their house, which they want to stay in, isn't really suitable. Should they need access, a handicap access? They don't, they have no other bathroom on the main floor in order that they that they could convert. They want to do the construction where it makes sense and they can have some somewhat of a master suite on the first floor. Shouldn't be necessary. The reason that we're proposing this on the main floor is because if it's on the lower floor, you're not getting to it. Right? You have, then you have to negotiate stairs and that defeats the purpose. There's no kitchen in the in the lower floor. So you wouldn't, you know, you wouldn't be able to live on the lower floor. And and, I mean, there are bathrooms on the lower floor, but none of them is of a size that would accommodate, you know, handicap access itself. You know, with with very sincere respect, our clients are not getting any younger. They they did start the process, you know, after they had some health issues late last year in in an effort to try to move ahead with this bathroom. They're concerned about letting another winter go by without having access to it, just based on what their their age and and their health has been. And that's why, you know, what we would like the board to consider tonight is granting the variance subject to or conditioned on us removing that seven hundred and fifty-two square feet patio on the back of the cottage and installing the rain guard, rain garden stormwater improvements. It's kind of a condition or in connection with getting the building permit for the addition. With the understanding that we know we need to address, we may need to address other stormwater questions vis a vis the stormwater regulations, and we would go ahead and do that while the while the bathroom is being constructed. I know it may be a little unusual of a procedure, but the hope is, is that if we can show you that we will have no net change in existing coverage. In fact, it'll be better because we're taking out, you know, six times the proposed new impervious surface and dealing with the stormwater management that that we hope that the board will have comfort level. That certainly there's no worsening of conditions and I would argue bettering of conditions in terms of the number that we have to meet with the coverage. So that is what we'd like you to consider, and we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay.
I just have one thing, Jerry. Um, you have to cut this.
Whoops. Just. Okay. The Hawks, seven eighty-three King Street. Dark Hollow Lake is at the bottom of the bowl, basically. Two sides, four sides, except for the dam are like this. And I would guess that the pitch of the three sides is maybe twenty degrees from here to the lake. And we live on that. There's King Street that that cuts into it and then it drops down precipitously. And there are enormous boulders all around, I think, because it's, I don't know, they must have blasted to to build the reservoir. But it was very challenging. And we bought the property because of how much we love the view of the of the reservoir. And the trees were extraordinary, very old and and big trees. And so the dedication that we have had to the garden and to the landscape has made us so attached to this property that as there is the day that goes by, that we don't go sit and look at it and think, look, look, look what we've, what we've been able to do. Because when we got there, the lawn went from the house to King Street to the driveway. That's all there was. And we said we began to add shrubs and we began to add plants and flowers and all of that. But it's, the reason that tree fell down is it was growing on rock. And the wall went up in order to create a little area to plant another tree. When that goes up any further, it's solid rock with, we put little plants in, little rock garden. But everything we've done, we've done, first of all, we didn't know, as as Jerry said, we didn't know that we needed permits for a lot of what we did. And I think that the actual running of the water down that slope has been mitigated by some of the sort of terracing that has come out of some of the walls, the retaining walls. Because we used to get a lot more water before we actually built the addition. So we want to stay in our house so badly. And we aren't getting any younger, unfortunately, which we were both reminded of substantially this past year.
It's okay.
You good?
Yeah. You're okay? I'm a lawyer, trained as a lawyer. I'm a photographer. I became a photographer about twenty years ago. I do landscape photography. I am the photographer for the New York Botanical Garden. I did photographs, a book on the Rockefeller Gardens. I am gonna publish this year in September, a book on the Dupont Family Gardens. So my wife is a designer. We have created, I think, an Eden here, okay? The real issue is that I'm 87 years old. In September, I will be 88, okay? I just don't want this to keep going on and on and on. And we would like to get started so that we know that we won't be, I won't be carted out of the house, you know? And, and I'll have a place to stay because we can't, with all that we've done, we never thought that we would come to a time when we could not walk up and down the stairs. It's hard now. So we would like to do it so that we not be put in a position of fix it first. You know? What we want to be able to do is have a permit, get started and get it done so that if it's ready, we can live on the main floor. Otherwise, we can't live in the whole house. We're just not going to be able to do it. So it's very, very simple. And I, so I think there's a real hardship here. And the hardship is something that you're not going to see ordinarily. So I don't know how you think of this in terms of exceptions, but I don't believe we're doing very much here. It's underground. It doesn't really affect anybody other than the fact that it creates facility so that we can sleep in, in the room that we're, that's there. And no one will care. And so it seems to me that, you know, if you just, however you want to weigh it, it comes out that we ought to be humane with respect to this. And we shouldn't be put through the rigors of distrust. And the distrust being, are you gonna actually comply with this as you go on? You know, fix it first. What we're saying is give us the permit, let us get started, let us know that we're gonna be able to live in our house. Okay? That'd be very much.
I, I do want to give you, we, we had photo booklets done. I should have given it to you when we were running through the photographs and the letter from the neighbor. If I can just hand those up to you.
Sure.
They work in the packages as well, but just so that you have.
Okay. Anybody is in this room or online that will speak to this application? Do you have anybody online?
No hands online.
No, good, okay.
Can we take down the?
Oh yeah, can we get that down and get our, what, memorized word again? Hi Howard, nice to see you again. Okay. This is by far the largest variance I have ever seen being on this board for not 25 years, but darn close still. Very unusual. I also do want to interject the fact that this is also one of the most beautiful properties I've ever seen in Newcastle. And I commend you for that, it's gorgeous.
Thank you.
I know you did a lot of work there.
I'll visit anytime.
You first, you fit a rock in a hard place. We usually, or I should say always, want to get the variances straightened out before we do any passing of any applications. Breaking this variance, I'm going to, just for your bathroom amendment, working on your coverage variance is gonna be difficult if at all possible for us. I, I would, before I would make a decision, I would like to get input from our engineering department. Not that, not that your engineer is incompetent or we don't believe him or anything, but for the record, I would like his, his, his facts to be verified by our engineering department before we do anything at all. Which means we're gonna have to be putting this off for another month until September at least. I, I, I have a question for our staff.
Yes.
The fact that these walkways are pervious, does that create a situation where it is not considered development coverage? Or is it development coverage whether it's pervious or impervious?
The development coverage, the definition of a structure does not consider pervious or impervious.
I was afraid, I, I kind of knew that, I wanted it for the record, I was afraid of that. Because I would be so happy to be able to say, forget all those walks, they're pervious and we'll just deal with what you have.
Tom, what about tree pits? Structure is defined as anything built on or into the land.
Even though it doesn't house a person.
It's still defined as a structure, unfortunately. This is a unique situation. For the purposes of coverage calculation, you have to, you have to consider all those structures and you always have for every other application, walkways or tree pits or anything else. That's what you have to do.
And if you, when, when talking to the engineer.
Yeah, you really, nobody can hear you. I apologize, but if you speak from there, nobody can hear you. I apologize. I can't. Well, I'm not.
And speaking to the engineer, how does that work? Does he ever come to see the property? Do we get to get, get suggestions from him about the kinds of things we could do to reduce the amount of, of building?
If he needs to come to see you, he definitely will. My, my reasoning tonight is, and again, I'm not, I'm not holding anything against you. It's not that I don't believe you or anything, but for our purposes and for our record, I would just like to have our engineer corroborate your engineer's ideas on how to, how to mitigate the situation. I know when we do get to the end of this thing, even with the mitigation procedures put into place, it's still gonna be a huge variance that we have to deal with. And our, 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 our job is to try and grant the least variance possible and still satisfy the code and the applicant and the neighborhood and everybody concerned. So we, we need to address this in a very careful manner.
It'd be very helpful to get guidance then from you guys.
Yes, I think that would be helpful, we're all concerned.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. It's clear that we're not gonna dissuade you tonight. This, Peter is, is a licensed engineer. He is a man of honor. I do not doubt that. Okay. So the, the real issue for me is that we applied last year and we have gone through something which is out of gogol, you know? Or Kafka, if you will. And so it's going on. As I said, I will be 88 in September, okay? Time does not stand still. I know where you're standing, I'm in the 80s myself. Okay, and I do have medical issues also. So I understand what you're going through and I, and I sympathize with you. But you also have to realize what we are up against. We are, a board is charged with interpreting and zoning laws and granting or not granting variances. And we have a procedure to follow and we have staff to help us to make these decisions. And without the input from that staff, I don't believe we can make a proper decision. And I'm excited to mention all of that. No, I'm not asking any of that. What I'm telling you is at least what you should do, not, I'm not asking you to do anything that is not in, that is not procedurally correct or administratively correct. What I'm saying is that what we have gone through is such that we believe that we have touched the land only lightly, okay? And that you will find that confirmed, is what I'm saying to you. There will be no surprises, is what I'm saying to you, okay? So what I'm hoping is that if we're around in September, okay? We will, you will have confirmed, okay? I would hope so. Okay, that's all I'm asking. That you will have confirmed. Because there will be no surprises.
Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
So I think what we need to do, if I, if I hear you correctly, is we will go meet with Bob. And not me, obviously, but Mr. Scott has got the credentials to do it. And we'll talk to him about what our ideas are in terms of stormwater management so that he has something to review for you and he can give you feedback.
And what I would hope to have be on before our next meeting, when we report from Mr. Seoli, advising us as to what he has determined to, to be correctly, to be done on that site and what he thinks about what's there already. And we'll have enough information to put it together and come to a decision.
Will you convey that request to Mr. Seoli so he understands what your timing is?
Sure, we can do that. We'll have our, we'll have our.
I can tell him, but I don't pay his, I don't pay his salary.
Don't worry, you can do it twice, you could, we'll be happy if you tell him. But we'll have our secretary convey our desires to him and tell him that we would like to have this resolved before the September meeting. The, not resolved, but the input before the September meeting so that we can digest it. And at the September meeting, hopefully, we can come to some kind of a agreement.
Best assured, we will follow up with Bob for certain, but it would be helpful if you would convey that.
I, before we, before we close with that, I had considered looking at your application, asking our members to do a site visit. I know you had invited us for a site visit, but we got the information too late. After seeing these pictures and hearing all about it, I for one, don't need a site visit. I think it's great. If any of our board members want to make a site visit, it's our, it's our procedure to never deny that. So I'll leave it up.
No, I mean, I, I, no, I don't, I, it's, it's a beautiful, beautiful site. I understand why you want to stay there and do what you're doing. You know, what you've done is really admirable to the property. I, I don't, it's difficult to express in words. So, you know, we understand the situation. Tony, our chairman, is trying to go around about the proper way to do this. So ideally, we can come to a agreement.
Thank you very much. If anybody changes their mind, please don't hesitate to let us know. We'd be happy to host.
Before we finish, I'll make a motion that we adjourn this until the September meeting. And they will come back with the information and we'll have our information from our engineering department.
A second then.
Chairman Giardina?
Aye.
Howard Dobbs?
Aye.
Mike Nolan?
Aye.
Ron Genzey?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Have a good rest of your summer.
Thank you.
Okay. Driscoll?
Driscoll's here. Charles Annapoly for Driscoll. I'm on screen, are you?
We have the.
Jeremy?
Yes.
This is, this is a new one.
Sorry.
This is Mr. Annapoly's.
Chuck is getting ahead of himself. Okay, Mr. Annapoly, go.
Okay, great. This, this project has been before you several times. Only, we're coming back with a variation on all of the variances you already gave this project, but with a change. This blue area that I'm circling on the screen was on the second floor of the, the little apartment. An office, we're changing it to a bedroom. So by changing the use of the second floor, we have, we are falling into the category of needing variances to, to, I guess, validate the use of the second floor as a bedroom. The side yard variances, the rear yard variances, the terrace variances, everything was already approved. We're coming back again asking for the same variances. And, and then, and then documenting the drawing for the file as a bedroom on top of the, of the second floor. That's the only change is this, this actual use of, of, of the building. Planning Board has approved it and, and we are before you because we're looking for the building permit and made the okay to build the interior space that close to the rear property line. They've all, but all these variances have already been granted via several other applicants, applications. I'm, I'm the third one asking for the same variances, but a different use. That's it.
So you're having, you're, you're converting this garage to a parking, correct?
The, the actual structure was a cooking school. And I think it was before you a lot, as I think, I wish I knew the name of it. But it was a cooking school with a kitchen and a student space on the first floor with an office on the second floor. Everything is staying the same. We're readjusting the inside to get a stairway upstairs to the finishing off of the attic, which is the bedroom.
And for the record, the planning board is on board with this.
Correct. It's been approved by the planning board.
I, I don't, I don't have much of a problem with this application, quite frankly. But I do have a question. Are you aware of the letter received for, by the Ruckles, with the, about water?
Not aware of that.
We have a, we have a neighbor who's claiming that there's a water problem on the property. Not a groundwater problem, but he actually, potable drinking water problem, there's a problem with the water service to the area. There's not enough water there.
Well, I, 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 I do know, I do know that we have, we, on this drawing, you see the one-inch water pipe from the house to the apartment. That was all, that was all part of, when it was a cooking school and a commercial kitchen in there. But I know of no other, I know of no other issue.
It's not, it's not the purview of this board to, to dwell on that. I was just wondering if you had any input about it.
No, I don't. Would it show up, when, would it show up in, we've been asked to provide the size and material of service lines. You could see here in section one, we've been asked to do that. We will with the water department.
Okay.
So it's, it's part of the planning board.
So that's what I was gonna say, whereas if you're coming here for that, we're not, that's not our purview. If you need to deal with it, it'll be through the water department and the planning.
Yeah, the planning board has asked us to do that as part of the building permit.
Fine, no problem.
Just so you're aware, Mr. Chairman, the letter that was submitted is stamped received by the planning board on June 13th. And the, the planning board resolution is dated, I believe, is, is dated January, is dated June 21st, 2023. So they would have had the letter. I don't, I don't know when the actual meeting of the planning board was when this matter was discussed. I don't know if Mr. Annapoly knows that or not.
I think, I think the planning board did get a hold of that. That's why there's a note, a revision on my drawing for them that says the minimum size and type of material of service lines will be designated by the water department. So that's an issue that came up and was, and Bob Seoli made me put this note on the planning board drawing.
Okay, the reason I'm asking is it came, it came to us with this application and.
Yeah.
I wanted to, to just reiterate that this is not anything that we can handle. It's up to you and the planning board.
Yeah, we're handling it elsewhere.
I don't even know why we got it, why we're even involved with this.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Any questions? Is there, is there someone who wants to speak to this application either in this room or online?
Chairman Giordino and.
Can you identify yourself, please?
Oh, yes, state members of the, of the board. My name is Charlotte Watson and this is Deirdre Cole. And we live at 131 Armocke Road. There's one house between our house and this property. And I can speak to what Mr. Ruckles wrote about. I'm hearing what you're saying and I understand you may not think this is relevant, but I think as a town governing body, it's important to understand what we're dealing with there. I've been living there since 1995 and Deirdre since 1990. We're probably the oldest residents now. You know, the others have moved away. So the house that we're talking about used to be owned by the Ingle Kings. We think of it as the Ingle King House. And a lot of what we know about the history, we know through the Ingle Kings. And we understand this is an application to create an accessory apartment as a single family dwelling. It's very different than a cooking school. And we're concerned that at some point, we understand that there's a family member who's living there, that they're trying to, you know, keep their family together. That, that's different than what we're concerned about. If this is designated dwelling, a single family dwelling, that it can become a rental property. This is one acre zoning. This particular property has much less than one acre already. That's supposed to be a single family on, on the acre. So that's one of the concerns that we have. Most of the properties are less than an acre, even though it's one acre zoning. So by adding, you know, one more dwelling to a small neighborhood, you're having a great impact on the neighborhood. But it's on a very busy road. It'll impact, you know, add to our traffic problems that we already have. And our primary concern is what Mr. Ruckles presented to you, which is about the infrastructure. There's a water line that, I don't know when it was created. We've been told it was created illegally, probably over a hundred years ago. And it runs, the water main is across Route 128. And the water line is a two inch galvanized pipe that runs off of that water main, under the road. It did serve five houses. And I can tell you, when I moved in there and if I was in the shower and our neighbor next door, between us and the houses that we're talking about, turned on his shower, I lost my shower. So the water is a very serious concern. Now, the neighbor between us and the, and the property that you're discussing put in a well and they came off of the line. So now, so the five of us, there are four houses on that line. And that, we get by, we have to pump the water, we have a pump. We pump the water from the town. We pay the, the water bill, just like everybody else does to the, you know, the water company. We pump it up the hill, because we're up on the side of the hill, into a holding tank. That's how we have drinking water. That's how we take a shower or do anything that we do with water. And so when we start adding other properties on, more people on using the water, it's a significant problem. We have heard, though we haven't been told directly, that the town will not replace that line under Route 128. And if anything goes wrong with the line, any of those connections to that line that are on, on our side of the street, all the neighbors have to get together and pay to dig up the road, the state road, and put in a new water line. So we're very worried about that. We don't have the money to do that. I don't know what we'll do if that happens. We're in a position where it'd be almost impossible for us to dig a well. We have a well on each side of us, but we can't dig a well. Mr. Ruckles, I don't think probably could either. But I can't speak for him and his property. But I, but so we're really worried about it. We're really worried about adding a property that can now become a rental property, which will bring more people into the neighborhood, using more of the resources, adding to our traffic problems and, you know, so on and so forth. It'll have a negative impact on the water supply. And also, we have a safety concern. There are no fire hydrants. When Mr. Ruckles added a floor to his house several years ago, the town required him. And he was a firefighter who's injured on the job or something and not, not, he's on disability, as far as I know. It was personal business. But he had to put a spring, a sprinkler system in his house because there's no water. If there's a fire, there's no water to put the fire out. And so to add another house, when the town's not willing to put in fire hydrants, not willing to correct the water delivery problems so that we can have a reliable water source, I think would be irresponsible. I don't know if you can do anything about that. We, you know, we didn't get notice about this meeting. Our immediate neighbor, the neighbor between us got a notice about the meeting. So we might have missed some planning board meetings. But whatever we can do, it will change the character of the neighborhood. It's going to make it more crowded. If this were a four acre zone neighborhood and they didn't have a water problem already built into that, to add another property would be more easily absorbed into it. But when you have one acre zoning and most of the houses on, in that area are under an acre already, it's going to be a crowding problem as well and one that could, should and could be avoided. Let's see. You know, we have already, we have, we have a neighbor who's a builder, who keeps heavy equipment in his house. We have a landscaper across the street. I don't know really how many, how large that family is, but they have large parties every weekend. And on Saturday and Sunday, they have their wood chipper from their landscaping business running, chipping the, the wood they brought home. So, and the neighborhood's changing dramatically and it's getting louder and, and, you know, so we just need any help that you can give us with that. And we just want to say that, you know, the infrastructure is our key problem and we don't have any ill will toward our new neighbors. We've only heard good things about them. We haven't met them personally. So it's not about who's in the neighborhood or anything like that. It's about really the infrastructure and a great, a great need for it to be improved. And we believe the town should take that responsibility if they're going to improve more properties coming in.
So, what we're looking at tonight is, is a variance to allow for this apartment to be constructed. We, as I said before, we don't have any control over the water situation or any, any infrastructure situations like that. That would have to be taken up with the town, either the town water department and the engineering department. The, the the fact that we're, we're looking at an apartment instead of just a cooking studio is, to, to, at least in my way of thinking, not too much different. The town has passed a law a few years ago, many years ago, vigorously encouraging accessory apartments in the town to allow the elderly or people of lower income to, to live or some people to not lose their home and have a place to gain some extra income. The planning board has vigorously approved and encourages this use in all areas of town, including yours. If we were to grant this variance, it's not going to help you or hinder you with your water problem or with the rectification of the, the repair of the pipe or anything like that. That's something, we would love to help you with that, but we can't. We only can look at what the application is about.
I understand. I sat through the meeting tonight and I understand, I understand the rules and your, the restrictions that you have. So I'm not.
We're not all powerful here.
I sure wish that you were. And I'm not, I'm very much in favor of more affordable housing in our town. I do, I, I do think that putting it in some neighborhoods that where the properties are already so small, rather than beginning with neighborhoods that where the properties are already so large and there is land that's not being utilized, would be a wiser move. I know you can't control that. I certainly can't control that. But I also find that the communication with the members in the town is very lacking. We don't get notices saying, "We're considering all these things." And do I have to go on the website? How am I supposed to know? Why doesn't the town, and this is again, not in your purview, but why doesn't the town do, take a better effort in informing the, the taxpayers here so that they can have a voice and speak up and maybe the town would benefit from that?
Well, I think that attending a town board meeting and voicing your concerns would be go a long way toward helping you in that way.
And so how did we learn about the town board meetings? Circular. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. President.
No, no problem. I, I mean, you're right.
The website, the town website has, has no, has the calendar of every town board meeting and notice of.
They have to be noticed, they're out there somewhere.
Right, notice of the zoning board, public hearings and, and the planning board public hearing. And there was a public hearing on this application before the planning board gets sent, I believe, to neighbors within, what's it, 500 feet? Adjacent and abutting neighbor. So if you are two neighbors away, you don't get notice, unfortunately. You know, you could ask the town board to consider changing that so that it's a further distance. But that, that the law requires us to give notice of the public hearings to every abutting and adjacent neighbor. That's, and that's what they've deemed appropriate, so.
Okay, thank you. And, and just, so just as you can see though, and you can't change this law and I will go through that. But we're talking about a water line that has people on it that this, that this property will impact, who would not be under the current rules notified. Thank you. Thank you so much for your time. I know you paid really well for this.
Thank you. That being said, we have to deal with the issue at hand, which is
Rear yard variance.
An application for a rear yard variance for, is there anybody else that wants to talk? Nobody online, nobody in the room? Who can move and close this public hearing?
Second motion.
Chairman Giordino?
Aye.
Howard Dubs?
We gotta take.
Aye. Yep.
Mike Nolan?
Aye.
Ron Genzey?
Aye.
Chuck, could you take down your plan, please?
Say again, please? Can you? Tony, I can't hear you.
Give us our screen back.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
I, I can't hear you very well. How's that?
That's, that's good. Now we can see your handsome face and we don't have to plan.
See you. Mr. Chairmanship.
Is there any, any comment from the board members, anything? Howard, anything?
No.
Oh, okay. Who wants to make this motion?
I'll make a motion. I make a motion that we grant a 16.6, we want to say 17 feet on that.
Yes, absolutely.
17 foot variant, rear yard setback variance. And, and there's a development coverage variance too, there looks like.
No.
That was taken off.
Oh, that was taken off, okay, fine. To, at 143 Armocke Road, to the Driscoll family and Driscoll Lucas family. The variances are, actually have been in place for previous usage already. So this is not a new request in front of this board. This is just for a new use. The granting of the variance will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. The benefits sought by applicants cannot be achieved by other feasible method. The building is already in place. The requested area, the requested variance is not substantial. And, well, there is, it's, the building again is in place already. It will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood. There are no, there have been neighbors that wish to discuss water issues, which do not come under our purview. But there are no neighbors who are present or written in opposition to this particular variance. It is not a self-created hardship. And is there building to be done here or it's just?
Interior.
Just interior building? So there's no, so, so, okay?
No survey.
No survey.
Is there construction to be done? Yes.
Only interior.
Six months, start one year to finish.
We have touted.
Okay, six, okay, six months to start, one year to finish.
I'll second that.
Chairman Giordino?
Aye.
Howard Dubs?
Aye.
Mike Nolan?
Aye.
Ron Genzey?
Aye.
Congratulations, you have your variance.
Thank you, good night.
Thank you, thank you. I get the next one ready.
Okay, Goldberg Sturgis?
Good evening, Stephen McSeen, the architect for the applicant and the owner of 41 Jones Drive. Alyssa Goldberg and Patrick Sturgis. We're here tonight to request a side yard variance to reconstruct an existing wood deck on the south side of the house on Jones Drive. Currently, there is a about 172 square foot wood deck, raised about five foot on one end and about 30 inches on the other end of the property slopes to the backyard. It would be constructed of a little bit better materials than it was previously. It's been in existence for over 23 years and it just was poorly built. The wood is rotting away, the, the foundation's not in good shape. And currently, they like to, they have young toddlers come out the side of the kitchen door over there and they like to have play there in protected area. They can't anymore. So we'd like to reconstruct, excuse me, we'd like to reconstruct it, maintain existing vegetation there. There's screening, there's actually a six foot fence along the property line. There's mature vegetation on the neighbor's side. And there's a picture you can see there in your drawings, the view of the existing deck. There's some agro densers, mature agro densers that we've been maintaining as well. So the proposal is to tear it down, rebuild it in kind, reuse the existing stone walkway and steps going to the backyard. And in doing so, we would require a nine foot variance and a 35 foot required side yard. As far as five points are required, I did address them in the letter to you. I know you'll be commenting on them, but I do feel that this is not an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as it's a reconstruction of what's there. We're keeping existing footprint profile, stairs, walkway and even the vegetation. As far as being sought in another way, as you can see in the building envelope, right now, the property, the house is four feet away from the building envelope. So anything constructed more than four feet would require a variance. It's a meager proportion of a deck right now. It's 13 by 13, I don't think it's extravagant. And if it's substantial, the variance, I realize it's about 25% of the side yard. However, again, as has been discussed on this board, even this evening, a deck, I don't believe creates volume as it was in addition to a house. So I don't believe that is a substantial variance. And whether or not it affects the, the, you know, inverse of impact, there's already, it's already there. The walkway is there again. Any previous, improper surfaces are going to be put back exactly the same. No stormwater runoff, no, no, no increase in runoff there. And yes, it's self-created, as always, these things, but it's a repair of what's existing. And I think it'll be a better situation, so.
And how long has this deck been in existence?
Right now, I go back in, in the, the tax maps and I see it's past the year 2000. So I'm saying it's more than 23 years of existence.
Um, no problem, okay. Anybody in the room, there is nobody in the audience to speak for this because there's nobody in the audience. Anybody online that would like to speak to this application? No, no answer.
I just have a question. Was the original deck, did they have a variance or the original deck?
I think it predated the zoning.
So this is one that isn't self-created because it was there before they built, before, when they bought the house and it was loud. This is, in a way, it's not self-created. Yeah.
Okay, board have any comments? No problem.
No, sir.
Can we close the public hearing?
My second motion.
Chairman Giordino?
Aye.
Howard Dubs?
Aye.
Mike Nolan?
Aye.
Ron Genzey?
Aye.
Appreciate your time.
We're not done yet.
That's a public hearing.
I'm sorry, you closed the public hearing.
I closed the public hearing, but we didn't give you a very.
You're right. I just think I'm sorry, I've been here a while. I know you've been there too.
I'll make a motion that the application of Goldberg Sturgis for the reconstruction of the existing deck requiring a nine foot side yard variance be approved for the following reasons. This deck has been in existence, whereas it predated the current requirements without any adverse effect to the town and no, nobody, no neighbors complaining about it. The existing deck is in poor condition and is in need of reconstruction for, not only aesthetically, but safety. Granting the variance to reconstruct this deck will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or can the benefit be sought by any other method. There will be no adverse effect on the physical environment and the current conditions in the neighborhood. And this is not a self-created hardship. In fact, the ecosystem really predates the code. Do you think, well, you need an ass built, Tom? Or you need someone to run it then?
I don't need an ass built. It's being built in kind.
So you don't need anything?
I don't need anything.
Okay, so build it correctly and beautifully and get approved. And if you have six months to start and one year to finish?
Understood.
Then we should grant your variance.
My second motion.
Chairman Giordino?
Aye.
Howard Dubs?
Aye.
Mike Nolan?
Aye.
Ron Genzey?
Aye.
You have your variance?
Again, I think you have your time.
You're welcome.
If he was trying to expand the deck, it would be self-created, right? Because he's doing it in kind and it's.
Got it.
Uh, I'm gonna pick a guess on this, Sopepas. If George was here, he could.
Sopepas?
Yes.
I would guess that Tospepas.
Um.
We need help and.
It's, uh, Sopepas.
What is it again?
Sopepas. How's that, George? Your go.
Perfect.
Um, I'm Dan Cantelmo, I'm the architect for the project. And, um, coming to you remotely, so I'm gonna attempt to share my screen if that's okay, unless you are able to do it as well.
He should be able to do it if he.
I can get there. Do I have, um... Am I allowed to share the screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and you're not seeing my screen yet then, right? Okay, how's that?
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, great. So this is, we're, um, asking for, uh, front yard setback variances. Um, there's several of them just because of the different points from the property line. The greatest being twenty feet. What we're, um, proposing is to build additions to the, uh, left side, which is the pink, and a new front porch, which is the light blue. The light gray is the area of the existing and new that is compliant. The darker gray is the existing house that is non-conforming existing. So, uh, we're pinched on the, on the one side, we're, uh, already too close on the roadside. The backyard, if you can see the contours, is, uh, a cl- you know, a very, very steep slope. So we're proposing the additions on the driveway side, which is the only place to really build. And because of the, because it's a, um, double front yard, it's at the bend of the road. It's really the points of the additions that are infracting on the, um, on the setback. One thing I did want to point out that the... If you look at the, um, twelve-foot setback from the road where my cursor is, uh, which is probably fairly typical, as you get to the curve in the road, it almost doubles. So the appearance of this house as its setback will seem as though it's further away from, you know, the road than, uh, which it is, than normal. So it's good, because of the belly in the road, it's, uh, it's got more room to the actual road, even though the property line is setback farther. I just want to quickly show you. Uh, floor plans are just showing the extensions. Uh, we're extending the garage in order to create more storage space inside. We're extending the kitchen to create a breakfast room. And we're extending the dining room and again the porch. Uh, on the second floor, we're re-aligning some bedrooms, basically to make the primary suite larger with a, a walk-in closet rather than the shower closet that it has and its own bathroom. On the exterior, the front is, uh, delineated by this, uh, hatch on the side here. So to the right is the addition, to the left is the existing colonial house. Uh, this did receive ARB approval already, by the way. And, um, the front porch is, uh, where, where you see the reverse gable here is approximately the size of the existing porch. And we're adding to the right, um, to give them a sitting area, um, to take in their sunsets on the west corner of the house. The garage end is the same overall shape because it's already a three-level end of the house because of the way the grade is. But we're breaking down the look of the house with, uh, jogs that are varying to accentuate, um, one section of it, and again, not to make it look so massive. Uh, so again, we're, we're asking for, uh, the greatest variance, by the way, is also from the landing at the bottom of the steps. So although this is just stone on grade, it's been considered a structure and not a sidewalk. I believe because it's wider than four feet as the landing of the step. So that's the greatest setback required. We're actually, um, stairs don't count. So the, the, um, the front corner of the porch is the next, the next closest point. And that's forty-eight feet where sixty is required. We, we don't feel that there's really any impact, um, with this project. Um, there's, there isn't any adverse impact or, uh, detriment to the neighborhood. We feel that it's going to enhance the neighborhood with the, um, improved look at the outside of the house. Uh, again, we don't feel like it'll be viewed as something that's too close to the road. And, uh, it is a pre-existing non-conforming. So we're barely adding to the non-conformity of the, of the property. So we'd welcome any comments.
Is anybody online with their hands up to, to address this application? No hands are raised. Comments from the board?
None for me.
We're going to close the public hearing.
I, I, I personally know the house.
Pardon me?
I personally know the house since they're on my street. And, um, it appears that the, the plan looks good to me.
Good.
Yeah.
Thanks, Howard. Now I'll close the public hearing.
My second then.
Chairman Giordina?
Aye.
Howard Dubs?
Aye.
Mike Nolan?
Aye.
Ron Jensen?
Aye.
I can take it, Tony.
Okay.
Okay, uh, I propose, uh, that we, um, grant a variance to the thirty-five Mayberry Road, the Sopepas family, um, the variant would, uh, the variances would include, um, a fourteen-foot front yard variance for the dining room, breakfast room, garage. A twelve-foot front yard variance, uh, for the enclosed covered porch. Thirteen-foot front yard variance for the, uh, enlarging front steps. And a twenty-foot front yard variance for a new front stair landing. Uh, for the following reasons, um, the owners, uh, wish to expand their home for their growing family. Uh, the only opportunity is to the driveway side west, uh, because there's a steep hill to the south. Uh, and the home does not currently conform to zoning setbacks to the north or east. The, uh, home, i- i- as mentioned, is a legal non-conforming dwelling. Uh, there are no neighbors here to speak against it. One of our board members is familiar with the house and speaks in favor of it. Uh, the granting of the variance will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. Uh, the benefits sought by the applicants cannot be achieved by any other feasible method due to the, uh, topography of the land. The requested variances, uh, are fairly substantial, but, um, there is no other feasible, um, method to do this building. Uh, it will not have an adverse effect or impact on fiscal and environmental conditions in the neighborhood. Uh, as mentioned, there are no neighbors who are present or written in opposition. It's not a self-created hardship as it's a, it exists a legal non-conforming dwelling. It is self-created because they're expanding the non. It's self-created. There isn't existing non-conformity, but they're expanding the non. So that's what makes it self-created. If they had just kept it in the same place, then they wouldn't, uh, be, uh... Well, they're still lovely people and, um, I... Just to clarify, if you give them a variance, um... Is anyone gonna say?
This is.
Oh, it's six months to start and one year to finish?
I'll second.
And we'll need a survey. And which survey do we need? Finals. Final survey.
I'll second that, finally.
Chairman Giordina?
Aye.
Howard Dubs?
Aye.
Mike Nolan?
Aye.
Ron Jensen?
Aye.
You have your variance? Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll redo the next one.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, take a short break.
Commercial. You gotta get Howard back. You there, Howard?
I'm here. How come I don't see my face?
Yeah, we need you. We need your video. Okay.
Uh, why?
Okay. I'm supposed to have his video.
I, I, I see everything. I just, I don't know why my face is not there. Oh, there it is. Yeah, you can't stall without.
Um, I'm gonna, another name, Georgis.
Gorgeous.
I feel like I'm right.
Should I could start?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, good evening. I'm Lewis Fusco, landscape architect, representing John and Ruth Gorgeous. Uh, we also have Paul Fusco from our office here, also landscape architect, and I will share my screen now. Okay, we're here to, uh, ask for requesting a development coverage variance of five hundred and ninety-four square feet. Um, our client, um, we are relatively new homeowners.
Before you go on, before you go on.
Sure.
There was a mathematical error in your, uh, in the town's calculations. It's not five hundred and ninety-four square feet. We're doing six hundred and eleven tonight. Just for everybody.
Okay. Sure.
It was just a minor error in the calculation of the, uh, of the coverage calculation, but the correct number is six eleven.
Six eleven. Okay. So, um, our client purchased the house just after the in-ground pool was put in. Uh, the pool had just a coping around it and, uh, they had reached out to us. They, uh, did get word, um, after purchasing the house that they were at the, uh, pretty much at the limit of their coverage, uh, calculations. Uh, they assumed they would be able to put a patio around the pool. Um, and in, you know, they, uh, brought us on board to take a look at the property and produce a modest patio around the pool. Um, and in doing that, we looked at different ways of reducing some of the existing coverage. I'll just give you a quick, uh, photo of what the existing, the existing rear yard, this, um, hold on, let me... Can you see the picture of the pool here now on the screen also?
No.
No.
No, okay, sorry. Okay, uh, hold on. Okay. The rear yard is basically lawn around the pool and they were hoping to have some, uh, patio space around the pool. Uh, I'm going to go back to the plan and unfortunately this is... Okay, so what we looked at is they had an existing driveway that looped around. So we're, uh, proposing to eliminate, it was an awkward driveway to begin with. There's a, a pretty tight backout area of only, uh, twenty-nine feet in this area. So existing wise, if anyone was to park in this area, backing out of this, uh, awkward curve was always a difficult, uh, configuration for them. So we discussed eliminating this section of the drive, widening up this area so that it could be easier getting in and out if they had to, which allowed us to el- uh, to eliminate a hundred and five square feet of driveway as well as fifty-one square feet of, um, walkway in the front of the property. Of, um, walkway in the front of the property in proposing, uh, an addition of, uh, seven hundred square feet. Of pool patio around the back of the house, so they had some entertainment space around the, uh, the, the pool. Um, we did our best looking at different options to see how we could, uh, reduce coverage wherever possible. Um, unfortunately, with the size of the house, you, as you could see, it's a pretty modest. With regard to outdoor spaces, it's just that the house footprint is pretty large to begin with. So that, uh, that was, uh, you know, part of what we were working around. So, um, we feel that it, um, we've added, there is a dense screening along the driveway here, there's screening along. Uh, the edge of the terrace here, there is some wetlands in the back of the property, we've already received wetland administrative. Approval for the one little section of the, uh, patio and walk that pass into it. Um, we feel it is, it is not a detriment at all to the, the neighborhood, it's in kind with the neighborhood, if anything. Uh, we're able to with some plantings to give more of a green, uh, front to the property. And improve the, the visual of the, uh, this, from a street view of the house as well. Um, so for those reasons, we feel, we know it is self-created in the sense that, um. You know, as most properties, when you're asking to do something, it is a self-created situation. But we really didn't feel that there was any other way of giving them some usable space for, uh, for their family to use around the, the, uh, pool. And for those reasons, we're here to ask for that variance. And open for any questions that you might have.
So what is, what is, what is the, uh, um. Benefit of having this patio around the pool, what is, what is it? Why, why do you have to have it, since I didn't have it before?
Um, well, they, they purchased the house thinking they were going to be able to put a patio in, they didn't put the pool, and the pool was there, and they were, you know, just, um. Just assumed they'd be able to, uh, go from the house, the exit doors of the house to the pool without crossing the lawn. Um, and being able to have some sort of space to put lounge chairs for their kids and their grandkids to come that they're. They've got some children that are, that are older and, uh, coming out of college and all, so they just assumed they'd be able to have, like, anyone with some sort of lounge space for. For, um, you know, lounge chairs and all.
I understand.
How, uh, how much, uh, how many square feet did you take out when you checked, when you did the driveway? Or when you're going, what you're proposing with the driveway, how many?
We have, uh, we're taking out a hundred and five square feet, we're taking out, um, more than a hundred and five in this area. But when you calculate the difference between what we're adding here and here, we're taking, we've eliminated a hundred and five square feet. Of driveway area. And an additional fifty-one square feet of, um, of walkway. Originally, the client was hoping to run patio around the entire pool, and these are the areas where we kept negotiating back and forth to just say, let's. Let's get to the basic minimal that you can functionally use. Uh, and, and work within your, uh, you know, being able to come out the door of the house. And have some patio in this area, and then some sunning along the patio on this side as well. And they were fine with having lawn up to the coping on the rest of the pool.
Is there anybody with their hand raised for comments on this application?
No hands are raised.
No hands are raised, is there any more comments from the board?
No.
The public hearing?
One second, Marshall.
Chairman Giordina.
Aye.
Howard Dobbs.
Aye.
Mike Nolan.
Aye.
Ron Jensen.
Aye.
This is your extension.
Okay, this is. I'll make a motion that the, uh, gorgeous application, uh, for the. Installation of a patio around their swimming pool requiring a, um. Development covers variance of six hundred and eleven square feet. Be approved for the following reasons. The applicant has. Done their best to minimize the size of the patio area and still make it usable, uh, for their, for their needs. Uh, in trying to reduce the effect of their, uh, coverage, they have, uh, proposed to remove portions of their driveway and walkway. Uh, trading that development coverage off for the development coverage around the pool, even though. To himself did not give them, uh, a net zero, um, they've done the best they can, um. Granting of this variance will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, but will enhance the use of the pool. Uh, giving them an area to, um, put some furniture and, um. Have some area for their children and grandchildren to sit and enjoy the pool. Uh, there is no other method other than a variance that they can be used to achieve the benefits sought. Uh, this is not a very substantial variance, uh, you know, six hundred and eleven square feet. Uh, the, for any of the variants will not, uh, create any adverse, uh, uh, effective physical conditions of the neighborhood. This is a self-created hardship, but the benefit to the applicant will far outweigh any perceived detriment. To the neighborhood or to the town itself, um. Do we need any measurements on this stuff, what do we need for that?
We need a final survey.
So, so we'll need a final survey, uh, upon completion, you will have six months to start, one year to finish.
My second motion.
Chairman Giordina.
Aye.
Howard Dobbs.
Aye.
Mike Nolan.
Aye.
Ron Jensen.
Aye.
You have your variance, good luck, thank you.
Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Okay, finally, DeJani and Burton.
DeJani Burton, are you here?
Hello, yes, that's me. I gotta do a share screen here. I hope. See that?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Oh, we got it. Okay.
Great. Okay, we have a legally non-conforming house in terms of the front, uh, setback. Um, what we're proposing is to extend the existing roof that's over the garage here. Out, out to the end of the house to create a little, uh, portico for the door, for the front door. Um, and it's gonna require variance of, uh, seven feet. Uh, sixty feet required and fifty-three is, uh, to the corner. Um, that's basically it.
Anything else? Okay. And, and can you repeat again, what, what is the necessity of this little roof?
Let's make a cover for the, for the front door here.
Cover for the entrance, okay.
Yeah.
Is there anybody, uh, online with their hands raised to speak to this application? No hands are raised, any comments from the board?
No, sir.
Nope.
Comments from the board, okay. I move we close the public hearing.
A second then.
Chairman Giordina.
Aye.
Howard Dobbs.
Aye.
Mike Nolan.
Aye.
Ron Jensen.
Aye.
All right, okay, I'll make a motion that the, uh. DeJani Burton, the, 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 Josiah Hesene and Burton, uh, application for the installation of a. Butch roof over an existing garage door and entrance, um, requiring a seven-foot. What is that, rear side of?
Front yard.
Front yard. You're right, very good, requiring a seven-foot, uh, front yard variance, be approved for the following reason. Uh, this is a very minimal request, uh, it will create, uh, or. Coverage for the entrance door to the garage and protect the, uh, people coming in and out from adverse and inclement weather. Um, it's. It, it will not create any undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. Um, there, no, there are no other means of, uh, available to achieve the desired end other than granting of the variance. It's a very insubstantial variance, um, the, the roof, new roof will not, uh. Create any adverse effects on the physical environment or the condition of the neighborhood. Um, again, while this is a self-created hardship, uh, the detriment, the, um. Benefit to the applicant will far outweigh any detriment to the neighborhood or to the town. Uh, there have been no neighbors who spoke in opposition to this request. Um, and what, what, what kind of measurements we need for this, Tom, anything?
It's an overhang.
Just an overhang, no, you're always.
No, sir, right.
No sir, we require, if you have six months to start and one year to finish.
Okay.
Not finished yet, we have your second.
Second. Second.
Chairman Giordina.
Aye.
Howard Dobbs.
Aye.
Mike Nolan.
Aye.
Ron Jensen.
Aye.
We love you, you have your variance.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
You too.
Aye.
Okay, last thing we have is, uh, approval of the June twenty-eighth meeting minutes. Uh, anybody have any comment on the minutes, if not, I'll make the motion that we approve the minutes.
My second.
Chairman Giordina.
Aye.
Howard Dobbs.
Aye.
Mike Nolan.
Aye.
Ron Jensen.
Aye.
And I move we close this meeting for tonight. We're up.